Please be upstanding for his worship, the Mayor, the London Borough of Hounslow, councillor Durang, accompanied by the Deputy Mayor and the Acting Chief Executive.
Good evening all. Those who don't know me, I am councillor Bishnu Gourung, 56th Mayor of Hounslow and it is with a great pleasure that I welcome everyone to this physical meeting of the Council of the London Borough of Hounslow. Oh perhaps when I say welcome, I really mean welcome back because this is the first meeting of the entire council in Hounslow House we have been able to have since February 2020. And whilst we will always have some political differences, I hope I can speak. For us all when I say it is wonderful to see everybody in person again. We have all waited for this day for long time. I hope that we carry this joy into the meeting itself and treat each other with respect, I repeat again, with respect and as old friends even when we disagree with each other. And in additional, to welcome members, I would like also to welcome officials of the council who are here to help support this meeting this evening. And also members of public who are present here in Hounslow House with us tonight and those watching us on the live stream. It's good to back and it's good to have you with us. I would also like to alert everyone present to the presence of representative of the media who will be recording the meeting this evening. It's probably a good time to remind you of the rules of physical meeting of the council. So may I ask everyone present to make sure that their telephones are on silent mode. Also whilst the public may tweet, councillors may not. May I ask everyone to be mindful that Hounslow House is still operating a one meter social distancing rule, so please do careful to maintain this distance if you need to move from your seat for any reason. The social distancing requirement also means that we cannot mark our first meeting together with the reception after the meeting as we used to do in the past. As I would have liked to have done, however if circumstances allow it and it is shaped to do so, I would like to hold a small event after the next council meeting instead closer to the Christmas. Do all member have the agenda document for tonight? Yeah, should have the agenda pack and the supplementary document. Okay, we should all have the main agenda and supplementary agenda which was published earlier today. All these papers are circulated electronically to members in advance of the meeting. I would like to remind... Supplementary, sorry, supplementary agenda is table agenda, I think you may have online... Thomas? You don't have a paper copy? I have just mentioned that member have circulate, for the member it's already circulated the electronical version of the table document. Now electronically. I'm afraid I've just asked with the our lawyer, Chief Manita, and said that now you should have the on your electronic version on your tablet. Thank you, sorry councillor Madhav. I would like to remind all member that debate should be done through the mayor, remember this thing? And I wish to see fairness and courtesy in discussion with no interruption overtaking during the contribution of others. May I also remind members about the rules on intervention. The constitution state that these must be brief and must take the form of question. You should also note, not use them to comment on the contribution of other. If you wish to disagree with something you have heard, please use your own contribution to the debate to express your thought. I will not accept people making comments after other have spoken except as part of their own contributions. And member, you may only speak once, remember? And member, you may only speak once, remember that, member, you can only speak once on each debate, so please do not try to speak more than once on each motion or report. Member R also asks not to turn on your microphones until I have asked you to speak. The microphones are connected to the video camera used for our streamed broadcast, and so if you press them too soon, they move from the person who is actually speaking. Please wait until I ask you to make your contribution before you turn them on. Please keep your phone on silent mode, thank you. Finally, may I ask member to avoid repetition and to keep to the point during debates? We have a lot to get through. Thank you, we will now move into the first item of the agenda. Is agenda item number one, apologies for absent and declarations of interest from members. I have received apologies for absent from councillor Ronjir Gill, councillor Gurmil Lal, councillor Tony Lukie, councillor Su Samsung, and councillor Salman Sahin. I also receive the absent for apology is the Punith Gurul, councillor Punith Gurul. Are there any more? May... Yeah, Lillibaugh, councillor Badh please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Karina Smart also sends her apologies.
Councillor Rizabat please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Tom Bruce as well, please.
Here councillor Ganjata, I can see you are far behind there.
Apologies from Adriana George.
Councillor Khalik Malik?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I believe councillor Adriana George also send apology.
We have received already Adriana George.
Well, she asked me to give me an apology.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ram please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, please accept my apologies as I may have to take an early departure from this meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I was going to go on that one as... Sorry, councillor Badh please.
Sorry, apologies, I forgot to give you my apologies from councillor Balraj Sarai as well, thank you.
Thank you, any more? Yeah, I'm leader of the council, Steve, yeah, go ahead please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, sorry for burdening you with a further apology, and that's for lateness for councillor Dunn, we are expecting her.
Councillor Hearn please.
Thank you, Mayor, I may need to leave early as well, my apologies in advance.
Thank you, noted. Councillor Allen, yes please. Is that any more?
Can I just say happy birthday to councillor Attiton?
Thank you, I think...
Thank you very much, and I'm here to the end.
Thank you, Addison, of course we do not have a time to celebrate, but we can wish you very happy birthday. So yeah, we have managed the lateness and the leaving early from the meeting as well, so we all noted that one, eh? Thank you, and I would like to draw the member's attention to the document in the agenda on declaring the interest. Is anybody? Interest, declaration of interest on the agenda, Pat? No, thank you. Are there any declaration of interest from the member? No, thank you. Okay, now we are moving to next item, agenda number two. Is the announcements. Now, one announcement is already announced so quickly, so I would like to mention now other. We now come to the announcements, we start with some more happy news. Yeah, one happy news is we already heard, the other one is, although he has given his apologies for this evening, I know that members will want to join me in congratulating councillor Sahin on his forthcoming wedding. On behalf of all members, I would like to wish him and his fiancee a very long and happy marriage. I hope that members will also join me in congratulating our two newest councillors, councillor Madhya Assim and councillor Davina Ram. Thank you, who are elected to the council by elections held on 6th May 2021. Councillor Assim represents Hounslow Heath Ward and councillor Ram represent Cranford Ward. On behalf of all member, may I welcome you both to Hounslow and to this, your first full meeting of the council? Thank you. May I now invite the cabinet member, if you may have the announcement? Councillor Corin?
For a poor rank chair, I'll go first. So last Friday I attended with other cabinet colleagues the municipal journal awards in London, we had a very interesting afternoon, and we were finalists, so that's the first time since I've been a councillor that we've been through to the final with five other councils across the country, so unfortunately we didn't win, but we're in the top six in the country, and that's an achievement in itself, and I'd like to offer my congratulations to the eventual winner, which is Plymouth City Council. And just a further announcement on that, I know others will have some as well, as part, as people, members may know or should know that we're part of the West London Alliance, and as part of the West London Alliance, we shared in the being, receiving the award for transforming lives category, and it was a programme put forward by West London Alliance, helping people who subject to drug and alcohol misuse, and they've been helped into employment through the West London Employment Service, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Lillibaugh please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, continuing on the theme of awards, I'd like to announce that the council have been shortlisted for the UK Housing Award, and we've been nominated in the category of campaign of the year, and that is really a sort of reflection of the work that we did on our estate generation proposals at Coventway and Charlton Way, and it specifically recognised the work that we did in terms of engaging with residents, in terms of the resident ballot that we needed to carry out. I just wanted to thank all the teams that carried out that work, because they actually in effect did it throughout Covid, which obviously would be very difficult to do something like that, so a huge appreciation from me to all the teams for their hard work, and the winner will be announced in November. I also have another announcement to make, Mr. Mayor, as you know, unfortunately, since the impact of Covid and the subsequent job losses and furlough here in Hounslow, we've seen a significant increase in people claiming universal credit, and in some areas, we've seen nearly 100% increase in claims for universal credit. So as you will be aware, that the government is proposing to end the £20 a week uplift, that was the £20 extra that people who are on universal credit were receiving, and the government proposes to end that in a couple of weeks' time. Our figures show that currently there are 39,000 people in the borough, and those are the figures from July, July this year, who will be affected and lose the £20 a week, which amounts to about over £86 a month. This obviously also includes people who are working and receiving universal credit. Obviously, this is a worrying situation, because I know a lot of families have been struggling and will have really appreciated the extra money that was provided, so I have asked some more information on how we can support residents in the borough, and in the meantime, of course, we will continue to lobby government to reverse the universal credit proposals to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lillibaugh. Councillor Santuna Razua?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I'm delighted to announce that the council has launched a shop local voucher scheme, in the hope that we can drive footfall to local businesses across the borough. The first vouchers were posted to residents on 30th of August 2021, and the first voucher redemption occurred on the 31st, I was an eager person, and that was for £17. There is one £20 voucher per household, which does not need to be spent in one go. I can announce to the council that around 350 businesses have signed up so far, and businesses can still sign up throughout the redemption period. We are seeing approximately £10,000 a week being redeemed through the scheme. I'm proud that this administration created and implemented the scheme as a positive way to use Covid funding and support footfall and jobs in the borough, and we've received much recognition as the first London borough to create this scheme. The scheme and Hounslow have been featured in the Evening Standard and Guardian, as well as being discussed on BBC Politics London, where the Conservative Assembly member Tony Devonish acknowledged the innovation and potential benefit to Hounslow's local economy despite being a Labour borough. It's a shame that our Tory friends here in Hounslow sought to play politics with our innovative scheme, and blog posts by councillor Mashisho on Chiswick W4 and comments by councillor Bidof at Overview and Scrutiny have undermined their earlier efforts in helping recruit businesses to take part in the scheme.
Sorry, point of order, Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Councillor Bidof, sorry, now please, please listen, I already mentioned to you respect while there is someone else.
Yes, but there isn't respect being given to me, I made no derogatory comments at all in scrutiny, I explained that I've been selling this scheme very heavily locally, I wasn't derogatory at all.
Councillor Bidof, this is only announcement, please, no debate here, thank you, listen carefully.
Businesses in the borough have really appreciated the scheme, and the final words on the scheme must go to them, and as such, I quote Adam Bloom of Bookcase London, a Chiswick-based business who said to the Evening Standard, "To be honest with you, it's brilliant, the help it's given us is great, we've had quite a few already, and it's just the fact that the council wants to support local independent retailers. Everyone loves getting free money, but the fact that they can spend it at independent shops across the borough means they feel good twice. Hopefully we'll carry on ticking over and taking the vouchers." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Rubbish, councillor Razua, thank you. Councillor Haniv Khan?
Thank you very much, your worshipful mayor, I have one announcement, which is the most awaited announcement, I can assure you, because it is the One Hounslow Community Awards that everybody is waiting for, just to inform our residents that the opportunity to nominate the wonderful heroes in our borough and the businesses ended yesterday, but that's not an issue, because on the 6th of October, we will be celebrating our heroes, so this is just to announce that those who are unable to actually take part or be invited, they still will be able to watch it through the technology from our team, through the stream, so, which is wonderful, so you can all take part. And as you may know, that there were nine categories, and out of the nine categories, one of those winners will be awarded the Hounslow Spirit Award, so that is an absolutely fantastic opportunity for the one who wins that, because it will be recognised for their efforts during the pandemic throughout the 16 months. So there's my announcement, councillor Mayor, for that, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Haniv Khan, any more cabinet member, or councillor Candice, Addison?
Thank you, Mayor, I've also got some great news, I'm delighted to announce that Hounslow council has been crowned a winner at the Public Service People's Managers Association annual ceremony. The category that we won in is called Work Transformation Initiative, and it's an award that recognises the great achievements of the council over the past 18 months, celebrating growth, resilience and positivity of workforce, particularly in the face of Covid-19 pandemic. The award celebrates the achievements of our human resources and organisational development. I want to say huge thank you to our leaders in this area, Steve Whitehead and Mandy Skinner, we were particularly commended by the PPMA judges for our work developing new organisational values and behaviours, that's something that I'm really, really proud of, that we've been able to embed those values in our day-to-day work of council life. I'm really proud of how, everything that I'm learning of how we are looking after and supporting our staff, and it gives me great confidence that the way that we treat our staff also is reflective of how we treat our members of public in our community, so I feel really confident that we really are putting people first and working hard so that everyone can reach their potentials. As already mentioned, this was in light of the 18 months that we've had with the pandemic, so I just want to thank everyone who works for the council in the department, I can't name them all, but we're hugely grateful for all the work that they've done and all the resilience that they've shown. Oh, and also, we were highly commended, so we were runners-up at the MJ Awards again in this area, workforce transformation, so we nearly, we nearly won that award as well, it probably wouldn't have been fair to get, you know, two awards in the same week, but I'm very proud of the work that we did to get highly commended in that category also.
Any more? Oh, yeah, councillor Candice? Candice is done, councillor Samir Chowdhury first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have few announcements, so I might take a little bit longer. So starting off from libraries, all libraries have now fully reopened for the first time in 18 months, with the reopening of the entire Branford Library last Thursday on 2nd of September. Adult education are receiving a full programme of works within the libraries. Branford Library and Adult Education Project has been very successfully completed, improvement for our residents includes two new adult education rooms, refurbishment with children's library and new furniture, main ground floor and first floor library furniture has been changed and a new lift, a new roof lantern, private office spaces, space and refurbished restrooms. 150 new public computers have now been installed in our, in our, all libraries. Libraries have been registered online, with online centre with the Good Things Foundation, this gives access to training courses, learn... This gives access to training courses, learn my way for residents and staff. And we're working together with our colleagues to promote that, promote all the courses, to include this on the Hounslow Connect platform, Mr Mayor. Officially, tomorrow we'll be opening the Gunnersbury Park Sports Hub, jointly owned by and run by Hounslow and Ealing Council. It has an official launch tomorrow, as I said, and tomorrow is also National Fitness Day. Gunnersbury Park Sports Hub is now one of the largest outdoor sporting facility in London. It provides a football hub facility in Hounslow and Ealing, which is supported by the Premier League and the FA. The new indoor sports facility includes five large courts, 100 station gym with state-of-the-art equipment, studio space and changing rooms facilities. And this is something really extremely local people and local residents are happy in Hounslow and Ealing. Shout out for the Green Lane Sports Ground. The sports ground successfully reopened for its first football match of the season on the 7th of August 2021. I was joined by our leisure team and some councillors, and it was really great day preparation at the sports ground. It involved work to the main pavilion and refurbishment of all playable pitches, which will be completed by the end of this month. And the sports ground and event space are now taking inquiries and they're available for hire. With Lampton Leisure, exciting summer programme that was with our first programme collaboration with Lampton Leisure, was a free summer programme which was available to residents between July and September. The programme focused on getting people and families outdoor and more active throughout the summer. Sessions included fitness, athletics and netball. And the feedback we've had from local residents was really, really great because this was free, a lot of the residents could join. With culture, Hounslow Theatre, Theatre and the Treaty Centre reopen for Covid-safe performances in early summer. It is currently doing a small-scale production and running parallel in theatre and small stream performances. The good thing is Bostrom Manor House has also been chosen to feature in a new heritage rescue TV series, which focuses on the craft heritage skills used to renovate 12 historic buildings. Filming will continue throughout the remaining works. The house is also participating in open house throughout two virtual tours. Hogarth House, a special temporary exhibition showcasing selection of work by T. Paul Ugo, including subjects inspired by William Hogarth, opened in July in the exhibition gallery. And the last thing from me, Mr Mayor, was really exciting thing. The Hounslow hosted the Euro 2020 trophy in July, which visited Branford Community Stadium as a part of the London stop of the tour. The tour was welcomed, trophy was welcomed to the stadium by myself and the leader of the council, councillor Steve Curran, and the Lampton Leisure colleagues. And we were joined by girls from local Wildcat and FA-sponsored football club at Nishcombe School and other clubs at this time. I'd now like to say thank you very much to all our team who've been working extremely hard behind the scene. And Parks, Leisure, everyone involved here, they've done great job. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Samir Chowdhury. Long one, very interesting. Thank you. I would like to welcome to councillor Catherine Dunn.
Thank you. Apologies for my lateness, Mayor. I downloaded the dates at the beginning of the municipal year, which was obviously my mistake. But I have noted the change of start time for future meetings. Short and sweet announcement from me. I'm really, really delighted to announce that the council was highly commended by the judges in the MJ Awards for our leadership on the climate emergency.
Okay, any more cabinet member? Now, I think this announcement is only for the cabinet member, so other member cannot announce. You have to see the, in a point of order, is the, see your, the council policy, so you will know what is in there. Thank you.
So are you saying I can raise a point of order? No? Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Finally, I'm pleased to announce that I will be holding my inaugural event to mark my mayorality on 29th October 2021. So long as the pandemic situation allows this to proceed. I hope that you will already have had invitation, but all members are invited. And I already have had an invitation, but all members are invited. And I very much hope to see you there. It will also be chance to meet representative from my mayoral charities for this year, who are SHAFHA, which stands for the Sailors, Soldiers, Airmen and Families Association. So it promises to be a lovely evening. We will now move to another item, agenda number three, minutes of the minute. Please see page number 972, 9272. We now come to minutes of the last two meetings of the council, which were held on 30th March and 4th May 2021. The later ones are the minutes of our annual meeting. I would also firstly, may I draw members' attention to some proposal amendment detail in the supplementary agenda paper, which was published earlier today. Secondly, may I ask a member if they have any additional correction for accuracy that they wish to propose? Councillor Han? Sorry, councillor McGigger?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've put forward all the proposed amendments. There were other considerations which were too numerous to mention, which I didn't put forward. That includes syntax, passing and poor grammar. But I can't be responsible for that, and that's the responsibility of the members who used it.
I think some of the accuracy is already on your supplementary agenda, so you can see on the supplementary as well. Councillor Gill?
Giles, yes. Page 11 and 12 of the minutes. The Annalise Dodd's name has been spelt Anne-Lieze on both, so I would expect that to be corrected at some point. Yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Apologies, it was already in the supplementary.
Just hold on, councillor Unsa Chowdhury.
Sorry for not raising this earlier, but on page 67, it says, "I attended an event at the Green School." It wasn't at the Green School, but one of the participants was from the Green School.
Thank you. Any more? Thank you. I now move to the matters arising from the minutes. May I remind you that this is just for clarification, not to reopen any debate? Matter arising? Councillor McGigger, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There were many items where cabinet members promised responses. Are all councillors satisfied they received the responses from the items promised for a future response?
Councillor Corrin, would you like to respond, please?
Yeah, I'm sure if councillors haven't received a response, they would let the relevant cabinet officer, sorry, cabinet member know, or the officer. I've not been informed by anyone that they're waiting for anything. We'd of course look at it if they are.
Thank you. Is there any more? Thank you. May I now ask a member to agree the minutes, subject to any amendments? Thank you. Let's, we now move to agenda number four, petitions. Pages 73 to 78.
Mr Mayor?
Just hold on.
I have two petitions to present.
Yeah, okay. We now move on to the petitions. We start with the first stage of the process, which is to ask if any member has any new petition to be handed in. I've just heard that's the councillor Shibra's rule for the petition. Please speak.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I have two petitions. First one is the rejection of New Heston Road CPZ consultation, which is presented by Mr Bal Gupta, and I've had 110 signatures. And this petition was presented to yourself in person by me. And the second petition is for the rejection of the proposed expansion of Broadwork Church. And I will present that to you now.
Thank you. Is there any more? I think councillor Jagdish Sharma?
Yes, thank you. From the Francis Road, Manor Avenue and other roads are joining west, and traders of Hounslow West wish to bring to your notice traffic congestion point on junction of Manor Avenue and Bath Road, on the corner of X side of St Tender Building Society. People park car on either side of Manor Avenue, thus causing long queues to go in and out of Manor Avenue. This corner, as a result of, becomes one-way traffic only. When service cars and delivery trucks enter and exit this area, the traffic becomes a nightmare. So, Mr Mayor, the residents are making this request that please put double yellow line on one side of Manor Avenue from Bath Road to Francis Road.
Thank you very much, councillor Jagdish Sharma. Officer will look at it. Okay, next one is councillor John Toot.
Yeah, that's very kind of you. There's a petition in Chiswick which is burning a hole through the borough. Already in five days, it's got over 1,200 signatures. But regrettably, it doesn't appear in page 77. I say that as a comment rather than a criticism. I raise it to highlight its existence. And secondly, to tell you, Mr Mayor and the cabinet, that this matter has been called in and is in a overview and scrutiny subcommittee on this Thursday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, is there any more? We now move to the second part of the process. There are three petitions to be considered this evening, which are number four, five and seven in the appendix to the report. I am pleased to welcome Mr Harkwood, the petition organizer for the first petition to be discussed tonight, which is about member special responsibilities allowances. Mr Harkwood?
Thank you very much, and good evening, good evening, everyone. I'm here today to talk about the petition that I started earlier in the year regarding the special responsibility allowances. And really to talk to you about why that was raised, my reasoning behind it. First of all, I'd say, having read the background behind it, I do not for a second begrudge the increases that were proposed. I think that in terms of where the borough aligned itself in terms of comparison with other boroughs, it is fair to say that Hounslow had fallen behind, based partly on the freezes that were brought in previously. The question really, though, was around the timing. And what we saw was increases in council allowances at the same time that the country is going through the pandemic, we still are, of course. And yet, the people within the borough who are living through, going through furlough, not, yes, real insecurity about their own work, their own sort of prospects, their employment prospects, whether they were receiving rises themselves from their employers. I know I certainly haven't for two years now because of, yeah, sort of situations around the pandemic. And at the same time as well, as this was coming out, we were also seeing that the council tax was being raised by the maximum allowed. Now, again, there will be reasons behind that. And again, I don't begrudge the borough for raising council tax at that point. But it really was a bit of a perfect storm of the timing of people being very uncertain, people having to tighten their own belts massively because of their situation they faced with the pandemic, along with the council tax increase and the increase in allowances. That really resonated poorly, I think, with the residents that I spoke to about it, certainly. And those who sort of felt strongly enough to sign the petition will have seen this as well as something that, perhaps a bit of a slap in the face really, for hard-working residents who were facing their own uncertainty at that time. So, as I say, it wasn't the fact that the allowances were being increased, but more the timing during the pandemic that really, really resonated with myself and with other residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harkwood. I'm sorry, you had only four-minute allowances, so anyway, you have finished that one there. So thank you very much, Mr Harkwood. I now invite councillor Santana Razua as a relevant cabinet member to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Mr Harkwood, for presenting your petition. I've noted the contents of it. I suppose in reality, there's never a good time to raise allowances, as you rightly said. I think some context is really important here. I think some context is really important here. Councillors haven't seen an increase of their allowances for more than a decade, and that's despite the cost of living increasing year on year. Rightly, the general public, like yourself, sir, have a far better understanding of what councillors and special responsibility allowance holders do and expect a high level of representation from role holders. The decision taken by SRA holders have real impact on people's lives within the borough. In trying to make sure that special responsibility allowances are not just reserved for those lucky enough to be retired, the council has to be serious about encouraging young professionals to step forward and help shape the decisions this council makes. And this can only be achieved by increasing special responsibility allowances so that those people can choose to take time off work, for example, and change their working pattern to fit in with council life without impacting on their income or quality of life. The council is serious about offering opportunities for members of our community and making sure that we facilitate a more professional allowance scheme will only lead to far better decision-making for our residents. In reality, the Hanslow's allowance scheme is considerably lower than that of the London average, both in total budget and individual payments, and below the levels recommended by an independent allowances review body. Of course, no council is forced to take the allowance and no limit on what they can do with it once it has been paid. Neither this, neither is this a political matter, as many of the increases that we saw as part of the proposals, especially the leader of the opposition, have been given to opposition councillors. But I thank you for your petition.
Thank you, councillor Rajuath. I now invite a member to note the response. Thank you. Any member does want to debate the issue, remind them that the protocol of a petition does not permit this. But if they wish to raise any issues, they should contact councillor Rajuath outside of the meeting. Thank you. We now move to next petition to be heard this evening, which is number five in the report. Kulina Malin. I welcome Kulina Malin, who is the organizer of this one, which is a request for the council to provide a recycling collection service for flats above shops. I would like now to invite her to address member for no more than four minutes on the petition. So, Ms Malina, please speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. My name is Kulina Malin. I live on Gunnarthu Lane in a flat above shops. I moved into the flat in September 2020 and was surprised to discover that the council does not provide recycling collection services to flats above shops. My petition asking the council to provide a doorstep recycling service closed on the twenty-second of April, and it received two hundred and fifty signatures, including councillor Joanna Bidduff and councillor Patrick Barr. I have been in conversation with my local councillors, Joanna Bidduff, Ranji Gill and Ron Mushiso, since the petition ended, who have all voiced their support on this matter. Whenever I have asked why there is no recycling service provided, I have been told that there was a doorstep recycling service a few years ago, but it was ended because the recycling bags were heavily contaminated. This could happen in any household. It is not feasible that there is a correlation between contaminated recycling bags and residents living above shops. And it is concerning that the council's response to this was to cancel the service rather than inform the residents on the specifics of what can and cannot be recycled. As many Hanslow residents pointed out in support of my petition, providing this basic service is the responsibility of the council and should be covered by the council tax paid by residents, as it is for residents living in houses and blocks of flats. It takes less energy and fewer emissions to recycle than to make things from scratch, which is why recycling saves a total of eighteen million tonnes of CO2 a year in the UK. This quote is from rap.org.uk on the Hanslow Council website, as the council are currently celebrating Recycle Week this week. It reads, "This year's theme is step it up. We know that the climate crisis affects everyone, so let's work together to actively do something about it every day through small but powerful habits like recycling." The council recycles over thirty-two percent of its waste, but has a target of sixty-five percent recycling by 2035. How is the council going to meet this ambitious target if they are depriving a large portion of their residents from recycling? Hanslow Council also declared a climate emergency in June 2019 and made a commitment to reducing the council's carbon footprint. Considering that recycling reduces greenhouse gas emissions, as noted on the Hanslow Council website, providing a recycling collection service for all residents seems like a logical step in this direction. The only option currently available to me, if I want to recycle, is to walk for a fifty-minute round trip to the recycling centre in the car park of the Sainsbury's at Chiswick Park. My flatmates and I make this trip every two weeks, usually with about four large, very full bags of recyclable rubbish. We are all young, able-bodied women, but this is a huge inconvenience for us and largely depends on our work schedules and the weather. However, this option is completely inaccessible for residents with a physical disability or chronic health condition, who have no choice but to dispose of their recyclable rubbish with the rest of their household waste. So, I ask councilor council, in their own words, to step it up and provide a recycling collection service to all of their residents, including residents living above shops. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Maline. I now would like to invite councillor Guy Lambert as the relevant cabinet member to respond.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for this petition, which is actually dear to my heart. We really do want to provide recycling to flats above shops. It's in our recycling plan that we're gradually rolling out. It has been delayed by the pandemic because any changes require quite a lot of engagement. As you rightly said, the previous scheme was not successful. The previous scheme, in theory, had recycling from flats above shops. In practice, nothing was ever recycled. So, for flats above shops, it's not practical to provide the separated recycling that we provide in houses and that we're increasingly providing in blocks of flats. So, we have to have some kind of dry-mix recycling solution. And at the moment, we are investigating facilities for how we could use the dry-mix recycling and get it properly managed, because that's not something that we do in Hanslow. The other thing that we are working on and will be rolling out shortly is more bring sites like the one at Sainsbury's in more local areas. So, thank you for the petition. We're very aware that the service to flats above shops is not as we'd like it to be. We're working very hard to come up with a solution, and we will, but it won't be yet. But it takes time to get these things sorted. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lambert. I now invite a member to note the response, but note, no debate is permitted and let them or you may not permit it. So, if you have any issues or debate, remind them that the protocol of a petition does not permit this. But if you wish to raise any issues, you should contact councillor Lambert outside of the meeting. Thank you. We now move to the last petition to be heard this evening, which is number seven in the report. I know that Mr Khan is not here. Is he here, just in case? Now, unfortunately, Mr Khan, the organizer, is unable to attend this evening. So, I will again invite councillor Lambert as the relevant cabinet member to respond of the petition, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This petition is to reintroduce weekly residual waste collection. As members will be aware, the decision to move to a fortnightly waste collection for residual waste was agreed at Cabinet in 2015 and implemented in 2017. Residual waste disposal is the most expensive and least desirable environmentally method of waste management. To date, the introduction of wheel bins has demonstrated both increased recycling and the reduction in the amount of waste. The change to fortnightly waste collection effectively restricts the volume of residual waste that residents can dispose of. It therefore encourages people to maximize the amount of waste they recycle. The change also encourages residents to divert food waste into the food waste bin as this continues to be collected weekly, as does all the other recycling. We therefore have no plans to return to a weekly collection of residual waste, and will continue to encourage residents to make full use of the weekly recycling service offered in Hanslow. We'll respond to specific needs of individual households in containing residual waste, and we will provide a larger bin when the household has demonstrated full use of recycling services, but has more non-recyclable waste than can fit inside the standard one hundred and forty litre wheel bin. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lambert. I now invite a member to note the response, please. Thank you. Right, now we move on to the, and now, may I ask the member to note the remaining petition listed in the report? Thank you. Okay, we now move to agenda five. Before we move to agenda five, I would like to invite Joanna Biddup. She mentioned about the point of order. Would you like to go ahead, councillor Biddup?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, I would. I would like to raise points in response to councillor Rajuath, who has made an extremely unpleasant comment, not in the spirit of the meeting that you had hoped for. So, I'd like to praise the work of the Chiswick Shops Task Force, which runs across Chiswick in all wards, which has promoted the e-voucher scheme with great enthusiasm. Councillor Barr and councillor Giles are involved in this as well, across Chiswick. And at one point, we were thanked.
Sorry, Chair, is this a point of order?
Councillor Biddup, it is not an explanation, it is a point of order, please.
Well, my point of order is that there's been an insult which was unfounded and inaccurate, and I would like the chance to correct it.
Yeah, okay. The point of order, it has to be a point of order in the council procedure rules or a breach of law, that's what the point of order is.
Fair enough, I can raise it another way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Biddup, thank you. Yeah, okay, councillor. How, yeah?
For future reference, I think this should probably have been raised as a point of information rather than the point of order, if that helps anyone in future.
This is just the point of order, so I entertain councillor Joanna Biddup, but no other. So, please, this is another debate, and point of order is already done to councillor Biddup. Thank you. Councillor Richard Wood, is that your point of order or not?
Point of information, Chair. The committee meeting that councillor Bidduff refers to was recorded, so all of that can be checked by officers of this council to see whether or not that is correct.
Thank you very much, everyone who involved. Now, we want to move to the next agenda. Do you have councillor John Toot, do you have the point of order?
And I'm very sensitive about being disrespectful. We sat here for a long time now, each gap has been muzzled. I just want to go back to councillor Shantu's presentation on the street funding. What he admitted to mention was so significant that the shop fund is from government money.
Councillor Toot, I think that's not the point of order. I want the point of order, please.
Okay, but we all are tasked to be accurate in our facts, and I'm not suggesting councillor Shantu has done anything wrong, but he admitted a very significant point. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Toot. I don't think, you know, this is the point of order. So, thank you very much for the petition. I would like to move to the next agenda, agenda number five. Okay, agenda number five is annual reports of overview and scrutiny, 2020 and 2021. It's all in the page fifty-four and eighty-six, fifty-four to eighty-six, and then time allow twenty minutes. I would like to invite councillor Dennis Sead to propose the report. Councillor Dennis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I am the chair of the London Borough of Hanslow's Overview and Scrutiny Committee for the municipal year 2021 to 2022, and I'm pleased to present, if I can speak properly, sorry. I'm pleased to present the scrutiny annual report for 2020 and 2021, and I will ask all members to note the report, please. First of all, I'd like to begin by thanking councillor Malik, Chair of OSC in 2020 and 2021, and his nine fellow scrutineers, councillor Biddup, councillor Cormil Chowdhury, councillor Chopra, councillor Eason, councillor George, councillor Garrawell, councillor Kiani, councillor Mushisho and councillor Tuck, for their efforts during the last municipal year. I'm sure you've all read the report, and I'm sure you'll all see that it makes clear that the pandemic affected scrutiny, as it did many other council meetings, not just in Hanslow, but in all other boroughs throughout the country. However, as soon as it was possible, OSC returned, and they sought to ensure that the voices of residents were heard, that decision-makers were held to account, and that scrutiny could act independently, looking to improve the work of the council. The report I'm presenting to Borough Council this evening details how OSC worked last year. Whether in formal meetings of the OSC or whilst hearing call-ins, the committee met virtually and focused on a small number of key issues that impacted on Hanslow, by which the committee was keen not simply to define as the council, but also the borough's businesses and residents. Unsurprisingly, the pandemic loomed large, and the committee focused on the wider impacts of COVID, as well as the council's finances across its three formal meetings in 2021 and 2021 again, I'm sorry, repeating myself. The annual report also references the work of the North West London Joint Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, which last year, under the chairmanship of the London Borough of Hanslow's councillor Collians, scrutinized the impact of COVID-19 as well as the financial, organizational and partnership context within which health and care services operate in the subregion. The challenges posed by the pandemic meant that there were no fresh scrutiny panel deep dives in 2020, 21. However, the scrutiny panels, through the stewardship of former councillor Hina Kiani and then councillor Ahmed for children and young people, councillor George for health and adult care, and councillor Kiani for housing and environment, engaged with Cabinet members to share panel recommendations on subjects ranging from child poverty, socialization and loneliness, and on antisocial behavior respectively, and provide policy development on issues which were as important now as they were when the deep dives took place. I look forward to taking stock of progress across these areas during my time as Chair. It's always a little peculiar, I must say, to present the work of others. However, as the current Chair of Overview and Scrutiny, I can recognize the commitment to make a difference, which runs through 2020 and 2021 scrutiny annual report. This commitment to making a positive difference is something I, and I'm sure my fellow scrutiny members feel the same, and wholeheartedly endorse and intend to carry into this municipal year, where we find ourselves not only returning to physical meetings, but also, very importantly, operating under a new constitution. operating under a new constitution. I would now like to ask councillor Kalik Malik to speak. Thank you.
Just hold on, hold on. I have to look for the second date, and then Kalik Malik can speak later. So may I invite councillor Richard Foot to second the report?
I formally second, Chair.
Thank you. Now, yes, councillor Malik, Kalik, if you have something else, then you may go ahead. Councillor Kalik Malik.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Said for presenting today's report. 2020 and 21 was a strange year of OSC. Scrutiny and pandemic saw the rolling over of the committee membership from 2019 and 20. This meant a second consecutive year for me as Overview and Scrutiny Chair, following my taking up the chair in 2019 because of late councillor John Chats' death in August 2019. Following public health guidelines, scrutiny ran virtually in 2020 and 21. Lots to learn for all of us, and it is nice today to see councillor in person rather than on a team screen. What did scrutiny achieve last year? As the annual report shows, we focused on the big issues affecting the borough: code response, borough recovery and council finance. Big, important issue that scrutiny was able to add to prospective too. We also had three call-ins referred to the committee. Although the committee continued through the pandemic, scrutiny panel deep dive didn't happen last year. Instead, panel chairs spent time with the relevant lead members, explaining their recommendations, the vast majority of which were taken on by lead members. Even if scrutiny couldn't happen like normal, we still developed our skills as a committee, engaging with the London scrutiny network and other training opportunities to ensure we did all we could to be an effective set of scrutineers. I would like to thank all members of OSC in both 2019 and 2020 and 2020, 21. Their commitment to the scrutiny in usual circumstances remained constant in even the most challenging of times. As a Chair, I was the most grateful for their contribution throughout the year. I wish councillor Said and her committee the very best of luck for this municipal year and look forward to reading her annual report next year. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Malik, and thank you for the Dennis Seid proposal and second date, Richard Foot. I now would like to invite the member to come in on the discussion, the report and allow for the debate. The members. Councillor Mel Colleen?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to do two things very briefly. First of all, councillor Dennis mentioned the loneliness and isolation deep dive that was carried out by councillor George, and I would like to say a big, huge thank you to be allowed to actually take part in that deep dive, because I think it was a panel which worked very well and highlighted an awful lot of the things that this council has now picked up on, particularly during the pandemic. So there were recommendations, which I believe, most of which had been accepted, and now those recommendations are being put in place, and particularly through the hubs that we've had during the pandemic. The second thing that I would like to say is to just say thank you to this council for giving me the huge honour of not only representing you on North West London JOSC, but being its Chair for the last three and a half years. A huge honour because I was one of the few chairs that actually continued in rotation, whereas most chairs had to stand down after one year. I think we've achieved much, and I wish councillor Eason, who is the new North West London representative, the very best of luck in continuing the work on that committee, because I know that it is needed, it is necessary, and the drive needs to go on. So all I will say is thank you, it was a huge honour for me, and that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, councillor Mel Colleen. Now I would like to invite councillor Corrin.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just on behalf of the council, I'd like to formally thank councillor Kalik Malik for his sterling work and the other committee members during his time on overview and scrutiny, and to thank and wish the best of luck for councillor Daisaid for her work, as she's already done, and the committee going forward. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Corrin. Now I would like to invite councillor Vikram Grewal.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I spent three years on OSC from 2018 to the municipal year of 2021. It's normally challenging and quite difficult to be the critical friend of the administration, especially on this side of the line in scrutiny, but I think we achieved many great things last year. So I just want to thank councillor Kalik Malik during his time as Chair and my fellow committee members for all the work that we put in. As you can see in the summary, there's a plethora of hard work and topics that we covered and achieved a lot by helping the administration and getting value for our residents. So yeah, just want to move the thanks to councillor Malik and thanks to the other committee members during that year.
Thank you, councillor Vikram Grewal. Now I would like to invite councillor Mishisho.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I congratulate the outgoing Overview and Scrutiny Chair and put on record my thanks also, because he worked tirelessly during this period of lockdown and was Chair at the most challenging times where our local democracy was being undermined by this Cabinet.
Mr Mayor...
To add to the fact that the overview...
That comment is totally unacceptable. This is a vote of thanks to the committees.
Councillor Mishisho? Just hold on a second. Councillor Mishisho, would you like to take the intervention? Councillor Corrin, please, cool down. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Carry on, councillor Mishisho.
Overview and scrutiny was not permitted to meet in person due to the restrictions, of course, and I think we can all appreciate the efforts of the officers and members on this overview and scrutiny. Mr Mayor, the Overview and Scrutiny Panel has not worked. The independence of overview and scrutiny continues to be undermined by this Cabinet. London Borough of Council Culture has sipped into our overview and scrutiny. It seems that if you speak your mind as a Labour member of overview and scrutiny, you get suspended, you are cancelled, you are suspended by this local Labour Party. One member has been made an example of during the 2020 and 2021. A warning to others who sit on the Overview and Scrutiny Panel. It is a warning that overview and scrutiny would never be independent under this administration. We lost our member-to-member ethos, we lost the authority as overview and scrutiny, we lost our ability to scrutinise policy. After six meetings and three call-ins, the recommendations that were issued were not adopted by this Cabinet. Instead, they just noted it. Apparently, the voice of the community was noted, but the recommendations were ignored. What is the point of scrutiny when the Cabinet performs political gymnastics every time we scrutinise them? Mr Mayor, I believe that the Overview and scrutiny did not work in the last municipal year.
Thank you, councillor Mishisho. I now would like to invite councillor Kalik Malik.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thanks councillor Mishisho for your comment. Just to let you know that last year, as you know, with limited sources and officers advice, that was the reason that panel meeting didn't take place. As you know, that we've gone through all the difficult time. And secondly, your comment about the Cabinet member didn't adopt all the recommendation and your comments about the overview and scrutiny. Just to make you aware, as you know, that we had a number of call-ins, Leader himself attended all call-in, and that scrutiny is the one who questioned all the points which was raised. And I think personally, I have raised all the scrutiny has recommendation there, and Leader has kindly accepted the most of it, and I have met Leader in the Cabinet and he adopted, and the rest of the Cabinet member as well, the most of the recommendation was adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Malik, Kalik. I would now invite councillor McGregor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a huge lost opportunity. Where's the scrutiny report into the SE and EHCP department? Where's the scrutiny report into our childcare insurance homes? Where's the scrutiny report into the question of our foster care provision? Where's the scrutiny report into our social balance? Where's the scrutiny report into our social economy? Where's the social elements of our Hamslow pound delivered? What's happened to Hamslow One? The accounting for Hamslow One is incredibly difficult, because we're looking at multi-agency, multi-paceted support. We need to get clarity, that clarity can only come from scrutiny and overview. And I know why this hasn't been done, because the numbers of people in scrutiny have been dramatically reduced over the last decade. We had a wonderful head of scrutiny called Mrs Sharma, who unfortunately went off to Richmond. At that time, she had eight scrutiny officers, because I made sure we had plenty of scrutiny. The numbers today are a fraction of that. No wonder we don't do that great deal of work. The self-satisfaction I'm hearing this evening is a reflection of a denial of what's going on. It's a blindness to the concerns that we have in running this council. All of us as councillors get casework. The casework is sometimes a vulnerable situation. Casework is sometimes a lack of administration, the casework is sometimes a lack of care. These are the things that we need to adapt to, these are the things we need to provide resources for where necessary. I'm not talking about investment here, I'm talking about operating cost. I'm not talking about long-term investment, I'm talking about immediacy. Report actually hides more than it delivers, and I'm not going to recommend this report to my group, because it doesn't deliver. And the self-satisfaction we're hearing this evening is tragic. It's a shame. I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. I would now invite Joanna Bidop. Councillor Joanna Bidop, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do endorse the previous comments made by councillor Mishisho and McGregor, but I would like to say that I extend my very great thanks to councillor Kalik Malik for his very calm and polite leadership throughout the year. It was very challenging, particularly when we moved online, and we had some difficult subjects to deal with, but he was unfailingly polite, he was non-partisan, and there were no lectures at the beginning of meetings asking us to behave in certain ways, and that I think is far more appropriate to this sort of council, or this council, than anything else. So I'd like to thank him personally for his good work, leaving aside the fact that we have been restricted by the administration and continue to be.
Thank you, councillor Joanna Bidop. Now I would like to invite councillor Lillibat.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody on the scrutiny panel for all the work that they've done and the chairs. I haven't been on scrutiny for a while, but I know that it has got potential to do some excellent work and some deep dive exercises. In terms of the dissatisfaction that I'm hearing from the opposite sides tonight is because I get the feeling that you don't really know how to scrutinise, and the fact of the matter is, you're supposed to be a critical friend and hold us to account, of course, that's absolutely right, and you must do that and make the necessary recommendations. But if you don't like what you hear, that isn't because scrutiny's not working, it's because you don't know how to scrutinise. So I suggest you do some training.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Lillibat. I now would like to invite councillor Catherine Dunn.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank all of the scrutiny panel for the work that they've done and all of the officers who've supported it. I'll extend my thanks to councillor McGregor for pointing out what happens when funding is cut to councils. We lose staff, we have had to reduce numbers of staff in that department, in all departments across the council, and it is absolutely... The way our staff carry on delivering services for this council despite the cuts that we have had to make because of the government is absolutely fantastic, and therefore my thanks goes out to every and single one of Hamslow Council staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dunn. May I invite councillor Said, please?
Yeah, just saying that I'm saddened actually to hear some of the comments this evening, especially when they're saying that they are not allowed to express their opinion or do not get adequate talk time. I actually totally utterly refute that. The meetings that we have had this year, you have had ample time to speak, and in fact, overall, in any one meeting, in particular the first one I will refer to, I would say you had more talk time than anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to invite councillor John Todd, please.
Yeah, I just want to make a small point addressing councillor Dunn's point. This myth about absence of funding, Miss Dunn, look at the accounts for this borough for this year. The HR department was costing half a million pound. It's now been increased by £685,000, more than 100%. Look at the government funding you've had when you go around the borough banging the drum for your carbon, money for schools and government premises. Like councillor Shantu talking about the shops fund, the beneficiary is frequently ignored. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor John Todd. I now would like to invite councillor Dial, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. It's quite... I find it very interesting that we're here yet again being told that we don't scrutinise enough, and as an opposition, we are critical or we are supposed to be a critical friend. However, whenever we raise comments or make statements in this chamber in order to scrutinise and challenge some of the decision-making, we are told that it's too late to make a change. What is the point of this council and of this meeting if we are not able to add a voice if we do not sit on certain panels, if we're only able to do that at this stage? So I think what we've seen over the last year or last couple of years, and forgive me, I've never sat on overview and scrutiny, I think the workload that is done by the committee is phenomenal in the most part. What I have seen is that there has been a shift, and I am very looking forward to seeing what the new constitution will enable us to say scrutinise how we scrutinise and see what we can actually do to make sure that the decisions that are being made by us for local residents and for local businesses and other ratepayers is in their best interest and not just an imposition by an administration who thinks they know best.
Thank you, councillor Jordan. I now got the one member would like to speak, and the Richard Foot, who was the second date, but I don't know whether you would like to speak or not, you haven't intended, would you?
I formally seconded chairs at the time.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to invite the councillor, Mayorman, and then I'm going to invite to councillor Sahid to some of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really surprised to hear that there's been nothing but negative talk today on the scrutiny. I was part and parcel of JOSC for quite a few years. And apart from that, I was also the chair on one of the panels. Now, when people say that they couldn't make a difference, or that their voices weren't heard, or their debate wasn't there, or it was too late to change anything, if you come regularly to any of the panels or to the meetings, you know exactly what's happening. And actually, it's not just part and parcel of the chair and the work that the chair does. It's actually collective work and input from every single member. There's no such thing as the chair taking the lead. The chair is only there to chair the meeting. The ideas are from the rest of the members that are sitting on that panel. And collectively, you make up your ideas of what is really important for you to be in discussion with. You hold the cabinet members to account, and you take that forward into discussion to make some productive change. Now, I don't understand why we're going round and round in circles, saying the same thing again and again, that we didn't have a positive impact on it. Now, if you look, the work of the scrutiny panels is really, really hard. It's really hard to get a good selection of things open for discussion. Now, through, I mean, over Covid and everything else, it's even been harder to even call in meetings, let alone anything else. But when we are here, and we are having meetings now, we've had meetings before, surely, isn't it up to each one of us to make sure that we come up for the meetings and we discuss what's really important to us and make our mark on that committee? Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor John Headman. Sorry. Thank you. I now would like to invite councillor Sahid for Danny Sahid for the sum-up, if you wish.
Yeah, I don't really have much more to add, other than to once again thank the previous scrutiny committee for working under very, very difficult times. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like to ask the member to note the report. Thank you. I would like to thank you, members, for their valuable contribution. Thank you very much. We now move to item number or agenda number six, which is Hounslow constitutional additional document, is page eighty-two to one hundred and twelve. And this is as I approach fifteen minutes for this proposal. So I would like to invite councillor Shantuna Rajuwat to propose the report, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Considering I seem to be very popular this evening, this is the first of my two reports, so you'll be hearing plenty from me. Members are asked to look at this report, which completes our journey in modernizing the constitution. We've had two debates previously on separate sections. And in this report, council is asked to adopt some protocols and annexes that are deemed necessary as part of the constitution. They are the planning code, the licensing code, members' right of access to information, and the officer code of conduct. And this should be read in conjunction with reports presented on the Fourth of May and the Second of March, as well as the Thirty of March as well. I'd like to put on record my thanks to the members, the cross-party constitutional working group, chaired very ably by councillor Bath, and also including councillor Collins, councillor Pritham Garrawal, councillor Punik Garrawal, councillor Sarinda Purw- sorry, Garrawal, beg your pardon, councillor Sarinda Purwawal, and councillor Dennis as well. And I'd like to also put on thanks, put on record my thanks to Rachel McCoy and her team for all the work that they've done on this. And I formally move the report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajuwat. I would like to invite the councillor Pritham Gruel for secondary report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second the report. And councillor Rajuwat has covered almost everything. I'm not going to repeat that. All I'm going to say is cross-party working group has worked very hard. And now we have an up-to-date constitution which will ensure transparency in decision-making, and will also help public in understanding the role of the council. I would also like to thank the working group and the officers for their hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Pritham Gruel. We now have the proposal and the second date also. Now, I would like to invite the member to come in and discuss the report and allow for the debates. Thank you. You're welcome. Councillor Dennis, I would like to invite you. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo councillor Royal's comments about the cross-party cooperation here, an example of what we can work well together on a matter that benefits the borough. And I particularly wish to appreciate the work by additions in the working group to councillor Purwawal and councillor Punik Garrawal, who added a lot of value to it. That said, we had considerable reservations as a group about whether it was necessary to have a constitutional reform in the middle of a pandemic. And there were key questions about whether this was a good use of time of the officers, and whether the time could have been used elsewhere. But we worked together. And it was it was interesting and to see the constitution and issues that we could work on. There were two issues, key issues, where I had dissent, where I dissented quite strongly. And I was listened to, but I want to raise them here. The first was the limit of four decisions that the council leader must submit when he to official scrutiny, that this has doubled from two hundred and fifty thousand pounds to half a million. And this was a point not just raised by me, but other members of the overview scrutiny panel and other Labour councillors. This is too high, and it's it opens up the opportunity for abuse by a future, any future council leader, regardless of party. And I think it's quite dangerous. And I would like the council to consider a revision of this at the earliest opportunity. And the second point I would like to say is, this is something that my colleague councillor Giles will take up further, because she is an expert in this area. This is to do with licensing and the question of whether ward members are able to attend licensing meetings involving businesses in their ward. They would be able to add considerable value, I think, but they're not currently allowed to speak at that meeting as it stands. And I would like that to be looked at as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dennis. Any more? Councillor John Todd?
I wasn't going to speak, but I did raise this with councillor Dennis. I'm looking at page eighty-six, paragraph four-eight. I just want to correct my colleague with the greatest deference. The issue for me, and I know others, is ward councillors cannot sit on licensing panels if the application is in their ward, cannot sit on the panel, cannot contribute and cannot vote. I believe in the licensing panel. I think it's very effective. The balance is good. But the key reports coming out of one Hounslow shows how important people who represent communities throughout the borough are allowed to participate. I won't go on too much, because I've mentioned this before and been rebuffed. But I said on licensing panel, I can deal with the house next door, and there are other panels which can do the same. I don't know of any skulduggery in licensing. I've never seen it. I won't comment on planning. What I will say is that I'm very disappointed that that caveat that caveat still remains. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John Todd. Councillor John Todd, can I invite to councillor McGregor, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the summing up, I would very much ask for clarification from councillor Shanty Wajewa concerning the titles and the documents that have been submitted. The documents have been submitted with a watermark draft. Does that mean that it's still subject to work in progress? There's no heading draft planning code of practice. But then if you turn to the item, it's also draft on the licensing panel, guess what? You find the word draft. So I'm a bit confused. Perhaps you can put us right on that. And then the question of the members' right to access to information, have we fully covered that in the constitutional framework? Because there may well be amendments necessary as a result of Covid nineteen, which only are restant for a short term while we get the pandemic under full control. And I certainly feel that the adoption of the officer code of conduct without amendment, okay, needs a further degree of scrutiny. Because I'm very keen to have the officer-member protocol looked at again and again and again, while there is any doubt about the quality of the work done by councillors, and their relationship with officers, and vice versa. I note, well, our position as the opposition, that we are not getting the level of cooperation that we believe we're entitled to. We are not getting items answered. I've raised this just gently with the chief executive. But if this continues, I shall actually create chapter and verse and present a case. I hope not to do that.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. And I would like to invite councillor Richard Wood now.
I'm just a little bit puzzled by some of the comments in regards to licensing panels. Members, ward members are invited to talk on licensing panels. They're allowed to make an input. They're not there as members of the of the panel, but they are there as informants that come there and make, you know, an introduction or make comments. So I'm not quite sure whether I've missed something in here or what. But that's been the case up until, you know, today on every panel I've been on. And there are members sitting here that have sat in that position. Chair, can I raise that? Can I expand?
Councillor John Todd, please. Thank you, Richard. Have you finished? Thank you. I now would like to invite councillor Mushishu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And here on the Conservative side of the group, of the council, we have many different opinions, and we all are welcome to share, to express them. And I believe councillor Dennis, his invitation was not as a cross-party member, but proportionality. And that's the rules of our constitution already anyway. And the whole point of this constitutional meeting was to tighten and make better the administration, so that we can be more accountable to the electorate, the people that vote for us, our residents. But instead, I think what we're getting here, especially with a single-member decision of up to half a million pounds, is a political power grab. This half a million pounds is almost the same amount the leader was afforded to give to S R A, the increases to pay off his cabinet members. So I think that we need to be a bit more careful about adopting these these new measures, especially in due to the fact that we are actually giving more powers to one single member. So I completely agree with councillor Dennis here, that I think that half a million pounds for one member without any form of checks or balances of accountability is simply not good enough and is not accountable.
Thank you, councillor Mushishu. I've got now three members on my list, is Lillibath, councillor Giles, and councillor Colin Mel. First, I would like to invite Lillibath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was fortunate enough to chair the Constitution Working Group. And I have to say, I must thank councillor Pritham Garrawal, because he chaired the last few meetings to look at this specific item. And it was a cross-party working group. And I think it's really unfair for councillor Mushishu to say that we just had councillor Dennis there for proportionality. He was a very active member of the group, and his contributions were well received. And we had healthy discussions about the importance of having a constitution in place, which is legal and compliant, and helps us to do the day-to-day business of running of the council. And so I don't understand, so I'm a little bit perplexed as to why that is being brought up here. We also did say and discussed many times that it's really important to fundamentally have something in place, which is a good template, that we can change from time to time if needed. We've talked here about good governance, and to make sure that we are transparent as a council. And this is exactly what we've been doing in the constitution. And I thank everybody who contributed to it. And I kind of don't really buy any of the criticisms here today. I think I understand that you feel you need you need to say something about everything. That's fine. But some of it's got to make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lillibath. I've got three more councillors, councillor Gill, councillor Corrane, and councillor Hearn. And thereafter, then I'm going to invite the sum up for councillor Rajuwat. So first, now councillor Giles, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So obviously, tonight is another night where we're talking about good governance. And obviously, given the discussion about overview and scrutiny, it's paramount that we keep that front of mind. I find it very interesting that within these code of conducts, bias and predetermination has been moved to the top of each of the codes. And that to make that really apparent, that we shouldn't go into any decision or discussion with our preconceived ideas. And I think what we have done as a Conservative group has always been quite open about this. So I'll continue. So I think it's one of those things that, you know, it is very important that we come in with open minds and are able to discuss. As my, as councillor Dennis mentioned earlier, I was going to refer to another point. But I think it's actually very imperative that we use this forum, the first meeting that we've met in person, when as an opportunity to make some of the points that may not have been conveyed properly during our virtual meetings clear in this forum, so that everybody can actually hear, because obviously, our attention spans are three seconds, and we don't always pay attention. So I think, you know, we may be hearing the same discussions that we've said before. But I think it is worth repeating, because we do want to come into these discussions with open minds. And I commend the fact that the points are about the predetermination or bias is imperative. And to go on to that point of four point eight in the licensing code, I think the point that, or was it in the planning code, and saying that we would like this to be mirrored in licensing. So the point that councillor Dennis alluded to, and councillor Todd was trying to amend, was that when you sit on the licensing panel, you cannot sit on the panel for a decision that is being made within your ward. I have sat on more licensing panels, bar anybody over the last year, than the chair, Miss councillor Foot, who has often said when making decisions in Chiswick, and this is part of the record, because these meetings are recorded, that it is too far to him because these meetings are recorded, that it is too far to him to go to Chiswick to investigate the site of a licensing decision. And, you know, that's a personal choice and it's very clear. But having that local knowledge is imperative when making decisions in and about the areas that we represent. Obviously, there is conflict of interest at stake. But I think you might find it hard to find anybody who has not been into any licensed premises in the borough. And therefore, what is the conflict of interest in not representing or sitting on a panel on a decision that is relating to the ward that you've been elected to represent? And that is the point that I would like to make. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Now I would like to invite councillor Corrin, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just a couple of quick points. First of all, councillor Foot's absolutely right. And that if there's a licence application in your ward, you receive notification from the department asking you to say whether you have any objections to that licence. And that's done formally. So every council does have involvement in licence applications in their wards. To say so is not correct. And not only that, we changed the arrangements a few years ago. So it wasn't just the councils whose application was in their ward, we did it for nearby councils as well. So there's a bigger spread of councils who may have local knowledge that may be helpful to the planning committee when reaching the decision. So it's not just the councils where the application is being applied for in the ward, it's a wider group of councils. So it's important to note that. And I would just like to formally request an apology for councillor Mesishu because he referred to me making a payoff to cabinet when he was speaking. I would like to formally admit it, I would like an apology for that and for him to withdraw that very nasty and unpleasant remark.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Corrin. Now, last one, I would like to invite the councillor Hearn, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think three other, four other councils have been discussing this point, but I try to make it as clearly as I can. There appears to be an inconsistency between the right of a ward councillor to sit on a committee in licensing and the right of a member of a planning committee to sit on making a decision in their own ward. There just seems to be an inconsistency. I've never sat on licensing, but I have sat on planning. And I do know the value of local knowledge. It just, I just would like to understand a logical reason why that inconsistency exists. There must be a reason. And final point, the members' rights to access information, really not too much to be said, but I do not see any right of appeal here. I can understand why the council would want to turn around and tell a member that they've just on a fishing expedition or they're asking for too much information. But there does seem to be no right of appeal once you've been told that. And to me, this is an area for potential abuse by an administration. I'm not saying I've ever had any experience of it, but could we just have an appeals procedure, a route? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hearn. I now would like to invite the councillor Sandhana Rajewat for some, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to address some of the points, I think raised primarily by councillor McGregor. He asked about why they're draft. I think they're draft until they're agreed and then they'll go on to the constitution as an agreed document or an agreed set of documents. I think I would say to him, and we've said this many times before, the constitution is a live document and we've committed as an administration to review it at least yearly. If there is a scenario where we do need to look at it more urgently, then the mechanism exists within the constitution to do so. So rest assured, this is not a dead document and it will remain live. Interesting debate on the licensing. Personally, I'm satisfied with the arrangement that we have within these documents because I take the view that the perception of a bias is probably worse than an actual bias existing. And the right of councillors to make representations on their local area is still there. It's not gone away. Yes, it may take a little bit more time, but actually that is where you can show your local knowledge. So that's, I'm satisfied that that is covered within this, with all due respect to those that have made representations otherwise. I'm sorry tonight that colleagues opposite have chosen to play a little bit of politics with this. I mean, to bring up a debate about the financial regulations when we agreed that at the last meeting, I think is really poor. You know, this is a live document, as I've said, and we'll continue to review it. But I said it last time and I'll say it again, if you're genuinely serious about the constitution, you know, taking on board councillor Giles' views earlier, she said it's worth repeating. Well, I've not had a single email from any opposition member telling me about problems or issues that they've got. So I can only assume that they're raising them here to grandstand and make political points for no reason, which actually ultimately undermines the constitution. So I'm really, really sorry that you chose to play politics with this and undermined the good work that councillor Dennis did as part of the constitutional working group. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Rajewat. We now have a comment. Now I would like to ask the member to vote on the recommendation. There is just one for approval, which is to be approved for documents. Right. Now, remember, this is for the boards. So for... Thank you. Against? Thank you. Any abstention? No, thank you.
Mr Mayor, point of order, please. Do we need to suspend standing orders for the completion of business? I think we're fairly close.
Seconded?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the standing order is seconded. Okay. Now I would like to result, declare the result. Now I would like to ask the declaration of the standing order to vote. For? Thank you. Now again, I would like to ask the against? Thank you. Any abstention? No, thank you. Now standing order is carried. Thank you. And also, I would like to declare the result of the council constitutional additional document is carried. Thank you. Now let's move to item number seven, agenda item number seven. It is again the Treasury Management Annual Report of 2020 and 2021. Page 113 to 123, 113 to 123. I would like to invite again councillor Sandhana Rajewat to propose the report, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I formally move the Treasury Management Annual Report, which is required under the Sitfor Code of Practice. Key highlights from this, obviously the members have the report and can read through it. Our net debt position has decreased, which is good news. And we've not incurred any new debt over the period covered, as well as our long-term debt portfolio decreasing, which I think is also good news. This is a good news report. It shows that despite what our oppositions say, we have control over the money and we look after it so that we can invest it back to our residents. He's laughing now, he won't be laughing in May 2020. And in fact, just a minute ago, he said that this was a complete waste of time, so he might as well go home because, well, there's no point in you being here. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rajewat. Please, all member, be reminded and do not disturb while member is contributing. Thank you. I now would like to invite the councillor Corrin for seconded.
That's the secondary report, Mr Mayor, reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. I now invite the members to come in and discuss the report. Thank you. Councillor McGregor, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much indeed. It's a great opportunity to look at this historic document, 31st of March 21, six months in the gestation. Not a clever document. We've heard from councillor Bath about scrutiny, not understanding the scrutiny process. I have to remind her that I'm a professional member of a professional institute. And if she wants to call me into question, she will have to face the consequences. Yes. Yes. This is an open forum. She has to be very careful what she says. Are there issues that we need to look at?
Point of order. I don't know if this is a point of order, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that sounds like a threat and I don't think it's appropriate in this building.
Facing consequences is a part of human behaviour. And that is an unauthorized intervention because I didn't ask you to speak and the mayor didn't call you.
Councillor Candice Atkinson is point of order, please. Seconded?
I just, point of information or whatever, but we do have a code of conduct. And I think, I mean, I know we get a bit excited in the council chamber and we all say things that are, you know, unpleasant, but I think we need to be aware of that. Thank you.
I'm fully aware of the consequence of my actions.
Thank you. Noted. And Kieran McGregor, please.
Thank you. I refer you to councillor Wadziewat's penultimate paragraph at the bottom of page 113, which gives the lie to all the nonsense about cost cutting because you didn't even spend the budget last year. And yet you carried forward 18.6 million worth of promised savings that never occurred. This is not a clever document. It's put together by good people. Our accounts and finance team are terrific, keeping the lid on problems that this council creates for them. The council's net debt is due to finance the capital program through internal borrowing. That's interesting. That is seen to be a positive. So you're not taking account of the loan market, where interest rates are at a historic low and which we can probably utilise if he wants to actually spend better. The other issue, of course, is that we don't actually say a great deal about our contingent liabilities with the Lampton Group. And don't forget, the ultimate public liability there rests with the taxpayer, not with a shareholder. So in respect, I'm happy to take this on board as a factual reference to what's going on in our financial management and treasury management. But it's six months since it was dated and therefore things have moved on. I look forward very much to having the next quarterly statistics, see what next mess you've made of things.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. Now I would like to invite councillor John Todd. Thank you. Councillor Mesishu.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And how wonderful is to follow our leader who actually is aware of the finances of this administration. He has been a member of this council as an elected member for a number of years. And when he speaks on these topics, I recommend or I ask that councillor Wadziewat, who is a junior when it comes to looking at funding, to actually pay attention. Because as we saw earlier in his presentation, the 2.3 million pounds that he saw benevolently is going to be giving to residents as a 20-pound voucher, that's actually an underspend, an underspend of the additional restriction grant allocations, which was meant for businesses. And we've got 900 businesses that have gone down the wayside and they have not helped them at all. Yet they're sitting on 2.3 million pounds of additional restriction grant allowance. So we cannot take any lectures from that member of administration who cannot even face scrutiny by himself. He has to rely on financial members, on financial officers to answer his questions for him. That's my point, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mesishu. Thank you, councillor Rajewat. Candice Atkinson?
Thank you very much. Just in response to councillor Mesishu, just because I've been in a number of meetings where you've talked about the voucher scheme and you seem to have quite a bee in your bonnet about it. But just for clarity, the reason that, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is the reason that it was underspent was because we reached out to businesses and made sure that they're aware that that money was available and it wasn't all, you know, they didn't all take up that support. So this was another opportunity to make sure that the money was given to the people who need it and spent in the area where it needed to be spent. So it's not at the fault of us underspending it. I'm happy to be corrected if I'm wrong, but I just think it's really important that you understand what, you've made it quite clear that you know where the money came from. It did come from the government. And we looked at ways that we could make sure that that was, making sure it was supporting businesses. And then when that wasn't all taken up by the businesses, we looked at other ways that that money could be supporting our residents and our businesses.
Thank you.
You can share that document also with me if you'd like at the end of the meeting one.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. I would like to invite first is the councillor Guy Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Giles talked in the last thing about people having preconceived ideas. It seems that the opposition have a preconceived idea to be against everything tonight. This is a very, very positive report where our net debt has gone down and the financial situation of the council has improved palpably. And councillor McGregor suggests we should go out and borrow a bit more money for something or other because it's cheap to borrow. I mean, that doesn't sound to me like a very good strategy for running a chip shop, never mind a large London borough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Guy Lambert. And now we would like to invite councillor Alan Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just on the point the opposition are making about the voucher and the 20-pound voucher, I believe this scheme is still open to businesses to apply even now. So they can, if there's a shortfall, let's encourage those businesses, all of us as a borough, to pick it up at both ends of the borough, yeah? It's still open, it's still there. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Alan. I would like to now invite councillor Corrin, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. What councillor Mesishu is wrong again on, he's been, I think on counting, he's been wrong on everything he says or has said tonight. So every business that applied for a government grant that met the criteria in this borough... in this borough has received it, and that's thousands of them. To suggest, to suggest that the unfortunate businesses that went out of business is a result of the council not giving, not by, not passing on the grant to those companies is a falsehood. It's simply not true. It's simply not true. And, and we've already heard, and you know, the voucher schemes, you know, we've had praise right across the political spectrum for it. We've even had the London Assembly Mayor on Sunday praising the scheme and was leaving it up to other, he was, he was all right actually, leaving it up to other boroughs whether they should take it up. Didn't criticise it at all. Didn't criticise it at all. And it's a theme. It's a theme for councillor Mesissu. He criticises not because he should, but just because he thinks he should. It's not because he's got a, a, a unique idea, he's got a lightbulb moment, he's got a silver bullet. He's partisan, he's true blue, he doesn't care. All he's worried about is getting an MPC. He doesn't care about anything else. He wants his name in lights, he's got some banner. Mr Mayor, are we allowed banners in meetings? I didn't think we were, I thought we banned that.
Excuse me, councillor Mesissu, please put down, thank you.
Mr Mayor, why is it, why is this a personal attack? Before you talked about, I, you talked about.
Excuse me, councillor Mesissu, you cannot intervene here, thank you. Carry on, councillor Corrin.
Every time we criticise one of the opposition, their first line of defence, you can't do that, you mustn't mention me by name, it's not fair. It's not fair what you've been saying tonight. You've already suggested openly that I paid off cabinet. That is insulting to me, it's insulting to cabinet members and most of all is insulting to the residents of this borough and the reputation of this council. And you, grinning there, should be ashamed of what you said, ashamed. You've learnt nothing, you've learnt absolutely nothing as a councillor in the last three and a half years.
Point of information, Mr Mayor.
I can't wait, I can't wait for the elections. I can't wait for the elections in May next year. The other point to remember.
Point of order, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Corrin, just one, please.
My point of order is I should be addressed as councillor Mesissu, not you.
Excuse me, I think that is not the point of order. We are, that's not the point of order, councillor Mesissu.
It is a point of order. It is, look, look at the constitution, it is a point of order. I should be addressed as councillor Mesissu.
Just step in just for a moment. The point of order in the constitution, it is, you have to state the relevant constitutional clause under which the point of order is being requested. So that's under the council procedure rules. Or you are alleging that there's a breach of law. So what, what is it? If you're, if, if it's under that, then that's the criteria.
I am alleging that it's a breach of conduct. He should address me as councillor Mesissu, I was elected just like he was.
What's the law?
You are the solicitor, not me.
I am, I am the solicitor, I am the solicitor, actually. So what is it? Well, that's what I'm asking.
Excuse me.
I am telling you that I should be addressed as councillor Mesissu, end of.
Well, that is not a point of order. That is not a point of order.
Councillor Mesissu, please.
If I might carry on there.
Be respectful and be reminded, yeah? And please do not disturb while the other member is contributing. Councillor Corrin, carry on, please.
Just for a point of clarity, if you were listening, and I know you don't, I said councillor Mesissu, and it was in the sentence that I said you. I called you by your correct name at the beginning of that sentence. So we are a prudent borough. And we have been since we were re-elected in 2010. That's why we've got elected back in in 210, 214, 218, and we'll get back in in 222. They don't believe your rhetoric. They don't believe it about money. We manage the money prudently, we look after the coffers. We care about our residents, we care about businesses. I didn't say F business as your prime minister did. We say we love business, they are the backbone of our economy and we should be proud of our small businesses. And we have done more than most to support small businesses during this crisis. So I don't accept your rhetoric, which goes on and on. I think last year was the first time, the first time you actually put a budget together since I've been leader. First time, first time, first time. In nearly six or seven years that you actually put a budget together. It was still on the back of a cigarette packet, but it wasn't bad, it wasn't bad shot at it. So as already said, as councillor Mesissu said, we'll take no lectures from you about money because we money, we manage our money, we look after it. And you're too young to remember, you weren't a councillor then, but we cut, we cut council tax twice since 2010, under councillor Dennison, councillor Jagdish Sharma. We've cut it twice and we've frozen it for five or six years. So don't lecture us about how we spend the residents' money. We spend it wisely, we spend it appropriately. That's why they keep re-electing us time after time after time. And they'll do it again in May 2022. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Corrin. I've got the three, four members still to make a comment. Councillor Giles, councillor Bitram Grual, councillor Hanif Khan and councillor Merman, Saida Merman. So I will take up these members and then we'll go for the sum up again. Thank you. First, I would like to invite councillor Giles, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. So obviously in a meeting where we are supposed to be convivial and friendly, it is nice to know that we have sat here like we have many times before in the last three years and had to take a lot of abuse, I suppose you could say it that way. I kind of, I, that's not the word I wanted to use, but it's the most appropriate to me. You know, it's, it's one of those things that we are criticised if we don't scrutinise. We're criticised if we do come up and find papers and reporting lacking. You know, councillor Shantani Rajuwat, councillor Rajuwat, sorry, talked about us emailing him privately if we had issues. But surely good governance and transparency go hand in hand. So making our statements clear in a public recorded meeting is extremely useful to make sure that there is a record of good decision making. So, you know, I was looking at this, the report summary, you know, late last night and automatically looking at the net debt that has decreased from 139.5 million in 2020 to 87.8 million as of March 2021. And that's £50 million. You know, it's great to know that our net debt has decreased, but also what was the amount of revenue generated by the raised council tax? You know, we talked, councillor McGregor talked about financial prudence earlier. And, you know, there is logic to wanting to decrease your debt, especially when interest rates were 16 or 17%, as was taken out by the Labour administration in the 1980s. And it's, it's understandable that we want to decrease that because we don't want to be throwing bad money after good. But councillor McGregor did also make a very good point that interest rates were very, are very, very low. So instead of putting that debt and passing that on to residents in, in, in raising council tax, surely there would be another way that we could look at how we can still manage the debt that we have while making sure that we are taking money out in a way that makes it sustainable for us to pay back in future times, especially when that time is needed. So, you know, we've heard a lot about the fact that, you know, this council has done a lot to help and care about residents. Obviously, putting that cost of the increase of, of council tax on residents is caring about residents, especially when you bring in SRAs. And, you know, we've heard the same argument twice, you know, again tonight about how councillors allowances need to be raised. Yes, that's a very fair argument and I think we all agreed with that. What we've taken on bridge with and what we do contest is the fact that the SRAs were not necessarily, necessary at this time, given what is going on, and the creation of additional SRAs to help cabinet portfolios, who are also assisted by officers in managing their remits, to create these shadow junior cabinet assistant positions. Thank you councillor Biddo for that. So I find it very, very interesting in that, you know, we, we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. But we are supposed to be here to make sure that the reports that we are provided with are scrutinised, that we look at them, we have a, we, we ask the questions. Because it would seem that the same voices that we hear from the administration have silenced the majority of you, I'm sorry to say. And we do speak, you know, there are only 10 of us, but the majority of us speak once a meeting, if not more. And surely there is, the opportunity, and this isn't political grandstanding, councillor Corrin, I think it's a case of let's set the record straight to make sure that what we're saying is fair, measured, without bias or prejudice, but properly researched so that we know what we're talking about.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Now I would like to invite the councillor Bitram Grual, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sorry, I'll just sit down for this one as the, the mic and the length is, is not great for someone of my height. Just, just to thank councillor Giles for those sobering words. You know, we appreciate there are 10 of you and I, I can speak, I think, on behalf of most, if not all of my colleagues on this side of the, the chamber, that no one silences our voices. And we're more than capable of speaking up on any matter and we're never constrained from doing so. So I, I apologise that you feel like that, but I must say in this instance, you're not correct. We've seen a plethora of local authorities being in financial debt ruin. Unfortunately, some going into administration and we see it far too often. Now, the reasons behind that have been covered, so I don't want to go over that again. But the fact that our net debt has decreased from 139.5 million in one year to 87.8 million is a fantastic achievement, not just by councillor Rajuwat, but by the officers, by, by everyone that, that's in this council. Because it puts us in good shape, A, to tackle the pandemic and stand shoulder to shoulder with our residents and businesses that need our help now more so than ever. And B, it makes us stand out as one of the most financially prudent boroughs, I think. So, so look, it's, it's a great achievement and I think irrespective of your political colours, that should be celebrated. So it's a bit unfortunate that hasn't happened tonight. In terms of councillor McGregor's point about financial credentials, he'll know I have quite a few myself. And if there is money in the budget to give to businesses, there's nothing better to help them come out of a pandemic and being locked down for so long than giving every household in this borough a £20 voucher to spend in their businesses. A, it's, it's a demand side shock and stimulus that will help their businesses more so than it potentially going to some that may not need the money and not going to residents that desperately need that £20 to spend wherever they can across the borough. So I would say the marginal propensity to consume is quite high in that regard amongst our residents. And I'm glad to see the success of that scheme and it being picked up by various media outlets. I'll stop there, Mr Mayor, and just thank councillor Rajuwat and the team for this report and congratulate them on the, the results of last year.
Thank you, councillor Bitram Grual. I now would like to invite councillor Hanif Khan.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'm not as tall as my colleague, so I'm okay, I can stand up, yes. So I'm, I'm kind of big in different ways, so, but I'll, I'll leave it right there. So, so the point I wanted to make is that I am absolutely, I, I don't know. The work that Rajuwat's, councillor Rajuwat's team has done under the, the team of the finance, it, it just shows in this report continuously, every year, that the amount of effort and the work that goes in to managing our finances, that we have been in extremely hard hit for many years. I remember since 2010, local councillors have probably lost 60 pence in every pound to date. But still, we're running a budget where we're saving money every year. I mean, that is in itself shows the quality and the expertise of the team. And then when we talk about the, the failing businesses that we're experiencing, I mean, many of us run businesses there, we know the challenges that we've been facing and how hard it has been. And I can assure you that our borough, London Borough of Hounslow, has done everything possible within its power to help and support the businesses and has encouraged them and given them advice. You can go to the website and you can see the, the amount of information that's on our own Hounslow Borough website that provides different toolkits, different advice, how to cope with the pandemic and how, how, what decisions you need to make. I mean, I'll just end on one note, yesterday I, or day before yesterday, I was at the food market just opposite the Hounslow House. And the amount of signs you see with the £20 voucher welcoming, they were so happy and so glad that we had set up this scheme, saying it's actually saving their business, saving their livelihood. They're able to put food on the table, not only for themselves, but for their family. It's a catalyst and this catalyst is what is reinvigorating not only the businesses, but also reinvigorating the, the sense of pride and enthusiasm. Everyone's having a great time with this, choosing what I spend that £20 on. Do I go and buy some food or, or as my wife said, need a pedicure, you know? So all these things are really important. You don't know how far reaching this £20 is actually helping different people around. So I'll just end on that note to congratulate the team once more for the amazing effort and the work that they do to keep this borough, you know, working effectively. And the money that's being saved is really clear. And, and I clearly would not take lessons from the other side. I still remember when I was elected and everybody knows when they were in power, the first thing that they did was to ask for a consultant. And how much money was it? £5.6 million. So we've even saved that money in the last six months and I'll end there, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanif Khan. Well, I was going to the sum up, but there are other members still interested to put their comment. So I'm going to take two more, then I think that's it. Because, you know, you do have, have made your comment fairly and representively. So I would like to invite the councillor Merman, side please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You talk about we are damned if we do and damned if we don't, and I love that saying. But you also know that obviously on, no matter what discussion anyone is having, there's always the debate of agree to disagree. Now, obviously, I respect each and every one of the councillors here, whether you're Conservative or whether you're Labour. But a healthy debate is a good way forward. Now, you, you know, you think you throw challenges over to us and you think that we just hide away. Actually, far from it, we rise to each and every challenge that you throw at us. And if I could, I would like to say that councillor Mesissu, the way that he was sniggering before and holding up bits of paper with whatever he would like to say, actually, we're not in a playgroup, we're certainly not in a school, but we are in the council chamber. How about if we stop that and just use our mouth and say whatever we need to say? And even this hand, you know, it, it doesn't really serve any purpose. Now, you're talking about businesses, why can't we say that this £20 voucher will actually help to kickstart our economy again? Now, I've spoken to so many businesses here and actually they think it is a perfect, perfect way to have a kickstart to their business. Now, it will bring in other people that normally don't go to that shop. So therefore, they will bring in new customers and more customers. Now, having spoken to businesses, that not one business has said to me that actually Hounslow Council has not supported them. Whether it's been financial support or just talking and looking through avenues. Now, you know, there is no business that has said that Hounslow Council has actually failed them. Yes, but if you have an issue, then you need to raise it. But, you know, just talking like this isn't going to help. Now, you know, why not for once? you know, why not for once think of it as something positive rather than just thinking, actually, they're sitting on the other side of the fence so we can just carry on and say everything is negative? It's not. Here is a perfect way of kickstarting our economy. We have helped and we have supported all the businesses in this borough. And let's hope that it continues and let's hope that, you know, we see prosperity in our own borough. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mayorman. I would like to invite the now councillor, Nishar Malik, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just tell the opposition, Steve has never stopped us talking. He even tries. I don't think we will actually be quiet. We do talk and we do say our mind. And we give you the chance in this chamber to speak more so we can keep quiet, so we listen to you. So this is the reason we don't speak that much. And secondly, can I just, while we are on the subject of finances, I think we all should be grateful to the team who is running the council's finances, including councillor Raduat and the leader. I think we have not gone down like some of the other councils who actually really had a problem with the finances and they could not really help the residents. So I really would like to appreciate the whole team and I congratulate you for the really good hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Nishar Malik. I would like to now invite the councillor, Unsa Chaudhary.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wasn't intending to speak, but councillor Giles' passionate speech has reared me on to speak because councillor Giles has spoken so much about respect, respecting each other in this chamber. However, I have seen that councillor Giles has been talking to her Conservative colleagues whilst other members have been talking and I find that very disrespectful. I'd also like to add that one of the reasons that we perhaps sometimes don't talk is because there are so many of us and we prefer actions rather than speaking about doing things and actually not following through. So please do follow through with your requests and your impassioned speech and please do show respect for your colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Unsa Chaudhary. I understand that everybody had a fair chance and put their comment. I would like to now invite councillor Ghassanu Razavat, first of all, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Yes, in summing up, this was a slightly broader debate than the report, but an interesting debate nonetheless. And to take councillor Giles' point, I'm really sorry to say, councillor Giles, nothing that I've heard from the opposition today has amounted to good scrutiny of this report or anything that you said. I think it's important to set some records straight. Councillor McGregor, I don't personally believe in borrowing for the sake of it. We borrow when we need to, in the same way that we raise council tax when we absolutely need to. And with borrowing, we pay it back in a sustainable way. That's what this report says. And I'm sorry, it doesn't accord with your version of the world, but that's the way I want to run this portfolio and that's the way I will run it. Councillor Mashiso, I referred to it in my announcement and I will say it now very clearly so that there is no ambiguity. You are fundamentally wrong in your assertion about the £2.3 million. We were allocated £2.3 million as an additional allocation because we spent the original allocation fully. So we supported every business that was eligible under the terms that the government set down. So it was your government that was rewarding us for spending the money that they'd given us to support businesses. That is the fact. Your Tory Conservative HQ briefing can say something else, I don't care. Those are the facts and they're in front of you and they're on the record now. This is, this, the debate from the opposition really highlights, you know, how much they're using this report to try and hide away from their lack of action about the devastating end of furlough. Nothing said about that and the devastating removal of the universal credit uplift. They just don't want to talk about that. But that will have the biggest impact. So, you know, if they wish to scrutinise us and offer an alternative, perhaps they need to start talking about that a little bit more, but I've heard nothing about it. And the choices here for our residents are really stark and using this report to try and bash us, I'm afraid this was going to come up. It's between a prudent Labour council that spends money wisely, that says where it needs to and makes the difficult decisions versus the alternative budget offered by the Conservatives, which responded to bringing down debt by pillaging one-off reserves that you would never get back again and wouldn't be sustainable, freezing pay for our hard-working staff who did a stellar job during the pandemic. And ultimately, this is the killer, privatising services because that is all they believe in. And I say to them, and I say to anyone that campaigns for them, this will not happen on my watch, not now, not ever. And I move this report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Ghassanu Razavat. May I now ask the member to note the report, please? Thank you. I would like to thank you all the member for their valued contribution. Thank you very much. Now we move to next agenda. Agenda item number eight. It's mooring by law. It's page 124 to 132, 124 to 132 page number. And I would like to invite councillor Corrin to propose the report, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move the report, withdraw members' attention to page 124 in the details of recommendations. Note that the bylaws are for Clitherow Island, which is situated in Brentford Ward. I bring to members' attention the top of page 125. And also on page 125 in the report summary, item four. And what we're doing is just bringing, we're regularising the bylaws to now include Clitherow Island. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Corrin. May I ask Lily Bar to second the report, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I formally second the report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you very much. I now would like to invite a member to come in and discuss the report and allow the debate, please. Thank you. First one, councillor John Toode.
As far as we're concerned, we're very happy to support this if it would circumvent time.
Thank you, John, councillor John Toode, sorry. Councillor Mel Collins, would you like to, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. But first, can I, I apologize for sitting in my previous comments and ask for your indulgence to allow me to remain seating for this one. Yes, I shall be extremely brief. This is a long time coming. We needed these bylaws to be tightened up for everybody. We must respect the way that people want to live. But if they wish to live that way, they have to respect the way in which the neighbours which they have been harassing ought to live as well. So I'm pleased that this bylaw is going to become part of council policy because I think we've respected the wishes of a number of our constituents that we represent here in Brentford. Thank you.
Say councillor Dennison, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. No, I support councillor Mel Collins's comments about ensuring the wellbeing of residents in Brentford who may have suffered as a result. But also to consider that those residents who are also, who live in canal boats. And there is a subtle, subtle, some nuanced difference between those who were there as a permanent mooring and those who move about a lot. And I don't accept the idea that all of everyone who owns a boat represents a sort of a danger or a problem for residents who live in flats. But to consider they are often residents of this borough and should be respected as much as those who live in flats. So I live in Brentford and I live in a flat very near the canal. So I'm very aware of their presence there. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor John Abidah, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mindful of the fact that we should make decisions with the best knowledge possible. Some of us did go and have a look at Clitherow's lock very recently and saw the problem for ourselves. And that is why I'm very happy to support this. I just would like to add that, taking a bit further than councillor Dennis has, I've lived on a boat. It is the most extraordinarily wonderful lifestyle and that should be encouraged if, in a borough like ours, which is riparian and has moorings, whatever else, and the possibility of more moorings. So we should encourage it if people want it, but of course it has to be done in a formal way. You pay an awful lot in mooring fees and it, and that's, I'm not saying we should pay an awful lot more, but the point of mooring fees is to regularise and make sure that everybody respects the area and contributes to the cost.
Thank you, councillor John Abidah. I would like to invite councillor Guy Lambert.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I share what councillor Bidol said. We have many boats in Brentford. We're very proud of them. My friends, some of my friends live on boats. I overlook boats from my flat. We, a few years ago, we had a lot of illegal boats moored by Waterman's Park. We've managed to get rid of nearly all of them. And Clitherow's Island is another illegal settlement. They don't pay any council tax. They don't pay any rent to anybody. They don't respect normal. Should we say, I'm trying to find a nice way of saying this, that their waste disposal is is not the same as the rest of us. Therefore, it's very important that we regularise Clitherow's Island, particularly with the enormous investments going into the adjacent Boston Manor Park, where, you know, where they've become more visible. And I would also say there will be some people living there who need to be treated with respect and as appropriate. If they're made homeless, we will deal with that, I'm sure. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Guy Lambert. And now I would like to invite councillor Corrin to some of the report, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'm grateful to members' comments. I take on board councillor Dennis's point. This is not about causing problems for boat dwellers of any type, as long as their licence is regularised, far from it. So I am grateful to the opposition, to John and Gerald and the rest of the Tory councillors for supporting this report. I'm most grateful. Thank you. And I move it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Corrin. We now go to the, the debate is concluded. So I would like to ask the member to vote for the recommendation. There are three votes, which is now, first one, I'm going to ask you vote for the far. Thank you. And I would like to ask again, the against, anybody against? Thank you. Anybody abstains? Thank you. Now the report is unanimously passed and I would like to thank you all the member for their contribution. Thank you.
When you affix the seal to this document, can you please have a picture taken? This may be the first time you've done it.
Thank you. I think it is all recorded. So, okay, not to worry about things. We can play as much as you like in the visa. Thank you. Now let's move down to the agenda item number nine. Appointment of committee. Appointments to committees and other bodies. It's just a three-minute. So we now come to the appointment, which is standing item on our agenda. No? Thank you. Any member? Okay, I'm listening. Thank you. Thank you very much, all the member. Thank you. Now let's move down to the, another item number 10, agenda item 10. It's a decision taken under the urgency and arrangements. I didn't have any urgency, but any member have the urgency matter? Okay, so noted. Thank you very much, member. Just a quick. Now we are moving the agenda item 11. It's the questions from the members. So first one is the, timing allowed is 11 to 16 minutes. First one, I would like to ask that councillor Bolraj Sarai to ask councillor Guy Lambert, cabinet member of highway and recycling and campaigns. So councillor Bolraj Sarai. Okay. So he's not here.
Mr Mayor, we've asked someone else to ask a question if you agree.
Thank you very much. Okay. Right. Okay. Anyway, it's got another opportunity. So councillor.
Councillor Assim.
Councillor Assim, please, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The special waste service has been operating mainly in central Hounslow since March 2021. How much impact has this had on fly tipping in central Hounslow area? And how many fines have been issued? My question is to councillor Guy Lambert. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Assim. The special waste service, yes, you're right, it's been operating since March. The project has been primarily focused on the east area of Hounslow Central. That's around about Kingsley Road and thereabouts. But they've also branched out to some other known hotspot areas in Isaworth, Cranford and Osterleigh. The reason for the focus in was that this area, that Kingsley Road was by far the biggest hotspot for fly tipping, reporting and unreported for over a decade. The focus and concerted efforts in Hounslow has resulted in, my paper says significant improvement, I would say a dramatic improvement into the public realm street scene by decreasing the frequency volume and type of illegally disposed waste. The SWS is working closely with the CCTV team from the council and proactively engaging with the communities to ensure a long-lasting effect of improvements. The team has conducted 104 business waste compliance checks, which have led to 36 businesses fined for illegal waste disposal. Since inception until the end of August, so that's March to August, the special waste service has searched 2,105 fly tips, issued 455 fixed penalty notices with an average payment rate of over 65%. Forty-five notices under section 8788 of the entire Environmental Protection Act, which is about leaving litter. That's a £120 fine. Thirty-two notices under section 33, depositive controlled waste, that's a £400 fine. Three notices under section 34, failure to produce the waste transfer notice, which is a £300 fine. And 375 notices under section 34.2A, failure to comply with household duty of care. That is also a £400 fine. And most of these fines are reduced if paid within 10 days. That were a total of 12 working weeks where the team was not at full capacity. For four of those 12 weeks, only half the team was on duty. Despite reduced numbers, the team has continued with expertise and its Despite reduced numbers, the team has continued with expertise and intensity, resulting in the success shown. Testimonies from Hounslow Highways cleansing operatives and local residents and businesses clearly state the reduction in fly tipping, as anybody who walks down Kingsley Road will see. Recorded reports have increased with the offices from the SWS reports of 70% of the reports due to being on site every day for five months. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Guy Lambert. Now councillor Assim, do you have the supplementary question?
Yep. It seems a very successful initiative. When will it be?
That's well done, well done, okay. Yeah, your point of order. Okay, I think councillor McGregory is correct, so no supplementary questions. So we move on to the next. Right, and then I would like to ask the, no, there is nothing. Councillor Lambert, if you want to respond, you can respond. No, so I would like to say thank you both of you to taking on this questionnaire. Thank you very much. Okay, we now move to the agenda item number 12. Then again, the another question, the councillor Raghbindra Sidhu to ask councillor Lillibath, deputy leader and cabinet member for the housing and social inclusion. Can I ask the councillor Raghbindra Sidhu, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In January 2021, the government announced that 70 million funding to be given to support prisoners off the streets, including 20 million for new accommodation services for, that will house women ex-offenders for up to 12 weeks temporarily. Could the lead member for housing please advise how many additional units of accommodation in Hounslow have been provided by the Ministry of Justice and Ministry of Housing Communities and Local Government to meet the needs of women offenders? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Raghbindra Sidhu. May I ask now councillor Lillibath to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Sidhu for asking this question. The council is not aware of the Ministry of Justice providing any additional accommodation or any units of accommodation in Hounslow to house women ex-offenders from the funding that councillor Sidhu refers to. The Ministry of Housing Communities and Local Government has provided separate funding for schemes to assist with ex-offenders, but is not a provider of accommodation. However, separately to this, early this year, Hounslow did successfully bid for £247,000 to support ex-offenders in supporting them to gain access to accommodation in the private rented sector. This funding will be used for male and female ex-offenders. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lillibath. Now, may I ask councillor Raghbindra Sidhu if you have supplementary question to Lillibath, please?
Yes, I have, Mr Mayor, if I'm allowed to.
Yes, good.
Thank you, councillor. I'm very, very anguished and disappointed with that, that we haven't had any extra funding for accommodation. Government own website says that offenders around 50% are more likely to break laws if released without somewhere to stay. I'm sure that the councillor will agree with me that one of the biggest factors preventing this is to provide safe accommodation while ex-offenders are seeking work and other support. Will you commit to lobbying the new secretaries of state of housing and justice to provide long term investments in efforts to prevent reoffending in Hounslow?
Councillor Lillibath, would you like to respond, please?
Yes, I will, thank you. Yes, I absolutely agree with councillor Raghwindra that it's hugely important to get the long term investment in efforts to prevent reoffending. In fact, it wasn't that long ago that actually had somebody contact me who had been, who'd been released. And this individual was having extreme difficulty with housing and there was very little support that I could find to access for him in terms of employment, housing, et cetera. And I think that that is really wrong in terms of trying to support people in the community and to help them prevent reoffending. So absolutely, we will do everything that we can as a council to try and bid for money where it's available, but also to lobby the Minister for Justice to provide long term investment in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lillibath and councillor Raghbindra Sidhu. Thank you very much. Now let's move to the agenda number 13. Is another question again. Councillor Alan Mitchell to ask councillor Santuna Rajawat, cabinet member for finance and corporate service. I would like to invite councillor Alan Mitchell to ask the question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, can I ask councillor Rajawat? How many more people are claiming council tax support and housing benefit since April 1st, 2020? Thank you.
Councillor Rajawat, can I invite you for respond, please?
Yep, thank you, Mr Mayor. It's strange talking behind me, councillor Mitchell, but thank you for your question. Covid undoubtedly has led to the number of people claiming support increasing, particularly for us in Hounslow with the downturn in aviation. As most new claimants were assessed for universal credit, it is this area that we've seen the largest increase in new claimants, as was mentioned by councillor Bath earlier this evening. Any new claim for universal credit was also automatically assessed for their eligibility for council tax support. So with your permission, Mr Mayor, just give you a snapshot. And I will provide fuller figures for the minutes as well. But a small snapshot, if we look at the number of cases, number of claims for council tax support in February 2020, it was 17,894. At its peak during the pandemic in August of 2020, that went up to 19,310. That's an increase of 1,416 claims, which on paper is an 8% increase. But we have to be careful assuming that that's just a low number because that does mask that original 17,800 who had added burdens on them and distress as a result of the pandemic. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Rajawat. I would like to ask the councillor Alan Mitchell, do you have any supplementary question, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, can I ask councillor Rajawat? If these figures were to rise again, especially with furlough due to wind, would he agree with me that this is not the time, therefore, to be repealing the universal credit £20 uplift? And therefore, repeating the error that the Conservative government made in 2010 by trying to bring down banking crisis debt at the expense of investment? A repeat mistake, I fear. And that the creator of universal credit that is connected to all this, Ian Duncan Smith, is saying himself it should be kept, as in the battle against Covid, it should be seen as award debt. Thank you.
Councillor Santuna Rajawat, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, absolutely, councillor Mitchell, it's like you've taken the words out of my mouth. And actually, we have to be very aware of the impact of the end of furlough. But also, it's a perfect storm for our residents at the moment because not only do we have the end of furlough coming up, we also have the removal of the £20 uplift to universal credit, which will affect a number of our most deprived communities. And then on top of that, the government doesn't seem to have any control over the uncontrolled increases in energy prices, which will impact those who are already struggling to fundamentally put food on the table. And speaking of food, we also then have food shortages because of the government's bad decisions around Brexit and the shortage in hauliers that that's causing. So this is an absolute perfect storm. And I'm afraid, as is always the case, us in Hounslow, this Labour administration has control over what it can control whilst government has absolutely no control whatsoever. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Santuna Rajawat and councillor Alan Mitchell. Thank you. Okay, let's move to the agenda number 14. Agenda number 14, again another question, is the councillor Patrick Barr to ask councillor Guy Lambert, cabinet member for highways, recycling and companies. May I ask councillor Patrick Barr to ask the question, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If I could just start by saying it's great to see everyone face to face after so long, 18 months, my God, we're back. Thank you very much to councillor Guy Lambert for your question. I refer to my question and I noted your response, so thank you. Have a supplementary, Mr Mayor, if I could go straight to that.
Yes, then yeah, go ahead councillor Patrick Barr, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Lambert, it appears you're making a desperate attempt to win votes with an election on the horizon, seen before with other projects in the borough up to the term of an election. It's evident from being in the borough that it's not, not enough's being done to keep the borough aesthetically pleasing. More needs to be done. You mention volunteer resources. Do you mean environmental champions? How many environmental champions have been recruited since March 2020 to reduce the growing jungle in the borough?
Councillor Guy Lambert, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you. I didn't really understand the first part of your comment there, but as a cabinet member and as a ward councillor, I'm focused on providing the best service that we can to my ward members and to the borough as a whole. And that's what my focus is, it's not about winning votes, it's about, and in fact, it's also doing the right thing because getting rid of glyphosate, which we did, which I think Sir Humphrey would regard it as brave to do that. It has undoubtedly been difficult to control weeds without this toxic chemical. So that's probably not a vote winner, but I think we're doing the right thing. In terms of the environmental champions, I don't have up to date figures. It was some, last I heard, it was about 130 across the borough. But I'll provide you a written response afterwards on that.
Thank you, councillor Lambert, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor Guy Lambert and councillor Patrick Barr. Thank you. Now let's move to the next question again, agenda item number 15. Is the councillor Gerol McGregor to ask councillor Steve Curran, leader of the council. May I ask councillor Gerol McGregor to ask the question to leader, please?
Mr Mayor, thank you so much for calling me. I refer to the question on the agenda and also refer to the supplementary agenda, which shows the very fulsome response which I received from the leader, which is very valuable, I think, to everybody concerned with the Afghan refugee crisis. I have a couple of further points to make, if I may, and then ask a question. In the basement of this building, there is a pallet which appears to be full of materials received for the Afghan refugees. Some of the packaging is damaged and some of it is spilling out. I just want to find out whether that is connected with the Afghan refugee.
Excuse me councillor McGregory. I think you know, you can answer this question on the supplementary question. Is that the supplementary question?
I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon, my apologies. I'll wait for you to call me for the supplementary.
Thank you. Right. I think you have, councillor Corin, would you like to respond? Or you have already given the written response to him, so are you still happy to respond?
Yeah, I've given the response. Was that the supplementary question, council?
I'm confusing everyone around me, I'm so sorry. I was making a comment on the super response you gave me and I was then going to ask a supplementary, but I went straight into my next point and I didn't let wait for the mayor to give you a chance to reply. But as far as I'm concerned, your original answer was perfect.
Okay, if that is the case, then may I ask councillor McGregory for the supplementary question, please?
Downstairs in the basement, there appears to be a pallet full of materials for the Afghan crisis appeal. And I just wonder whether councillor Corin is aware of that and whether he knows why it's been damaged and whether it's going to be there for long or whether it's going to be distributed. That's the first point. The second thing is I noticed that in his reply, there's no mention of the work done by several councillors and by several MPs with the Afghan and Central Asian Association. They were all very keen to have their pictures taken. Hanif Khan was name checked and so too a couple of Labour MPs locally. And I wonder what level of support has been given to the Afghan and Central Asian Association?
Excuse me.
If there's no support, why not?
Sorry, just the supplementary question and you can only ask one question. Thank you.
I'll go and clear the stuff up downstairs myself and I'll ask the question about the Central Asian and Afghan Association.
Thank you. May I ask councillor Corin to respond, please?
I think I've got it right. I am aware of the supplies downstairs and I'm sure officers are and they'll give you an answer of what they're doing that, Gerald, if that helps. With regard to community groups in the borough and the one you've mentioned, I had a meeting last week where all community groups, including that one, was invited to attend. And we thanked them for all of their work. We brought them up to speed, similar to the way we brought councillors up to speed on the Afghan evacuee situation. And we will continue to support all of the organisations and individuals that want to help the council in providing services to Afghan evacuees.
Thank you. Thank you very much councillor Corin and councillor McGrath McGregor. Now let's move to the agenda number 16. We'll get another question is councillor Michael Dennis to ask councillor Lillibath, deputy leader and cabinet member for the housing and social inclusion.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, may I ask councillor Michael Dennis to ask the question, please?
Yes, certainly, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes. Will the cabinet member for housing offer the council an explanation for the works being done at 63 to 67 Witten Road in relation to the attempt to construct an extra floor on a block of flats involving leaseholders and tenants living in a dangerous construction site?
Mr Mayor, if I could help, you'll see from the damage that I'm actually answering that question.
I think that's all right, as long as Lillibath is happy. Thank you.
So I've given a full and written response to the question and I'm happy to take a supplementary, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Corin. May I ask the councillor Dennis if you have the supplementary question, please?
Yes, certainly, thank you, Mr Mayor. Due to, looking at this building, due to the loss and damage caused to the building's fabric and to the tenants, such as hairline cracks, the unsatisfactory roof that fails to keep out the rain, tenants forced out of homes without the offer of accommodation, and where they have been offered accommodation that it's unsatisfactory, unfurnished and without wifi. Ironically, you might say, for a council that has received an award for a housing campaign, will there be an offer of compensation to these tenants and what compensation might there be?
Councillor Corin, would you like to respond, please?
Yeah, thanks. And I think most of the question was already answered in the written response. But as far as compensation is concerned, we want every development to go, well, of course we do. It's our tenants, there are other tenants or leaseholders. And if there are any problems in construction, like any good landlord or developer, we will want to do the right thing for those tenants or leaseholders. And we will certainly do that. You have my personal commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Curran and councillor Dennis. Thank you both of you. Now, let's move to the next agenda, item number seventeen, is the motions. The motion is proposed by councillor Steve Curran and seconded by councillor Lillibat. We are now at the part of the agenda devoted to motion. We have three motions to consider this evening and only thirty minutes under the constitution in which to discuss them all. So may I ask member to bear this in mind when making the contributions. We also have three proposed amendments to the motion, which are included in the supplementary We now move on to the first motion tonight, which can be found at the agenda item seventeen, which I just mentioned. Now, I would like to invite councillor Steve Curran to propose the motion, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, and I hope I can help members by shortening in the evening. Mr Mayor, in light of the Prime Minister's sacking of Robert Jenrick, the former Secretary of State, and his replacement by Michael Gove, who's given a commitment to review the current unpopular planning reforms, which has led to the former Secretary of State being sacked, even the Tory shires couldn't put up with these proposed changes, nor can we. So in light of that, further U-turn by the government to shelve those controversial reforms, I would like to withdraw the motion. I just would like to point out that we will, however, be watching very closely indeed for any future proposals that weakens the role of local communities and weakens the role of the local planning authority. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Steve Curran. Now, the motion is withdrawn, so let's move down to the agenda number eighteen now. Agenda number eighteen is proposed by the councillor Catherine Dunn and seconded by the councillor Steve Curran again. So we now, I would like to move on to the second motion, which can be found at agenda item eighteen. I now would like to invite councillor Catherine Dunn to propose the motion, please.
Thank you very much. We do need extensions on these, don't we? I feel like I want to move round the side of my table. I don't know if that's allowed, but maybe because Samia's not there. Hi, everyone. Yes, so I'd like to dedicate the motion that I have, that I am proposing and that Steve will be seconding to all of the charities, community associations, residents' associations and individuals who stepped up during the Covid nineteen pandemic. This includes the council staff, many of whom acted very quickly to set up the community hub, which was there to assist residents who were ill, shielding or otherwise vulnerable. The community hub responded to residents' needs as part of the council's pandemic response, and over the first fifteen months of the pandemic, vital support was provided to residents and communities through a central team which operated as the community hub, although this was in effect a virtual hub. This central team drew experience from across council services and partner organisations. This ensured that the council has delivered, responded to or coordinated support to local people, often in collaboration with our local residents or community groups. As the lockdown restrictions were lifted, the community hub has started to evolve and we're now putting into place the community solutions model. This model is innovative and genuinely transformational, redefining the relationship between the local authority, the residents and the communities that it serves. By committing to early intervention and prevention, the council will over time be able to transition from a traditional service-based model to being a collaborator and enabler for wider networks of support and new approaches built around community-based offers. Throughout the pandemic, the council also ran the Hounslow Response Fund, which provided funding of nine hundred and sixty thousand pounds, reaching thirty-seven thousand people through sixty-seven funded projects. These projects addressed a range of community priorities, including food, mental health, young people, isolation, befriending, learning and skills, digital inclusion and supporting vulnerable people across the borough. This year, the Thriving Communities Fund was relaunched in May. The fund will support voluntary sector and community-led capital and revenue projects, which will help to deliver the outcomes of the Thriving Communities Strategy. I'm also very excited to announce the launch earlier this month of the Your Neighbourhood Grant Scheme. This is a new grant that will be run in partnership with ward councillors and area forums. The idea is to fund additional community projects which will directly address the needs of residents. Up to three thousand pounds will be available per ward. All members present should have this flyer that is on your desk, which contains information about the Your Neighbourhood Grant and more information will be sent your way in due course. At the same time, we're working on the recommendations of the council's Community Engagement Review, and this also includes recommendations that came from the Overview and Scrutiny Committee. This will strengthen the relationship with our communities and include a renewed commitment to keep community conversations at local level, refreshed area forums and a mix of digital and in-person activity. So I would like to commend the motion and thank you for all your time for listening.
Thank you very much, councillor Catherine Dunn. May I ask councillor Steve Curran to second the motion, please, and speak if you wish?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'll have to second the report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. We now come to the proposed amendment, which member can find in the supplementary agenda. I invite councillor John Abida to introduce it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to add praise from our side as well to the many groups and individuals who've really come up trumps throughout Covid. I think we can all in our wards name individuals who have done things like cooked daily for people who were shielding, elderly people who were shielding, collected prescriptions and delivered other things to them, and the individuals in all of our wards, I'm sure, should be praised for that. Moving on to the detail of our amendment, I think it's, I hope it's a reasonable amendment that we can all agree on. It isn't changing the essence of yours, but it is making the important point, you've alluded to it, councillor Dunn, that area forums are changing. They need to change, and I hope they will. They have become tired and attended by very few people. They need a revamp to make them work locally. And one of the points in the amendment is what works in one area might not work anywhere else. And so it is important to emphasise that these are new-style area forums that have bespoke to each area. We can't go on having an agenda or a style that is one size fits all. It isn't working. We had ours the other day, and I haven't got much time, so I won't go into the details. If you'd like to know more about what happened, I'm very happy to give you that information. We've got a meeting later this week with the chairs and vice chairs, where I hope it will be discussed in some detail. What I can't do is suggest that you watch it because it wasn't recorded. And one of the issues is that we don't have broadcast equipment in the halls where our area forums take place, apart from one area forum which takes place here. And I understand the logic of the fairness point, which is that you can't have one being recorded whilst the others aren't, but that doesn't mean we should level down to that level of being unable to. We should be levelling up and installing broadcasting equipment in all of our halls. We can hire it, presumably. I don't know if we have mobile facilities or whatever, but I think we really have got to put a lot of effort into recording these meetings. I understand the point that councillor Dunn has made that it might put some people off. I think that's a fear that is unfounded. It didn't put people off coming to ours where they didn't know they weren't going to be recorded, they assumed they were, and I think that's what the pandemic has done. It has raised expectations about what is available online and how participation is allowed as a result of that. So we really need to have broadcast facilities installed. I'd like to move on to the innovation point and come back to the point that has been raised several times this evening about the e-voucher scheme, where a lot of misinformation has been put forward, including unfounded criticism for people who have done their huge amount to promote it. And as I started to say earlier, the Chiswick Shops Task Force, which is a collaboration across wards in Chiswick, including councillors Barr and Giles, have been promoting this hugely in Chiswick. We knew it was a good scheme and we have put a lot of effort into promoting it, such that a finance team member came to thank me for doing so because of, he did give me a number, but I'm not going to say it, of the applications that had been received, half of them were from Chiswick, and we have four retail areas. So I think that demonstrates just how much we were supporting it, and negative comments made by councillors Radewatt and Khan are extremely unwelcome. So we have done an awful lot to do that. We also reported problems, which there were and there always are with new schemes, and they were sorted out quickly. If we hadn't reported them, traders would be extremely angry with you, so I think you should thank us for that because we could just have been troublemaking and left it. And I have other words to say that I now can't read, but it is an important scheme and the main point is, as we've said several times, but it hasn't been clearly stated, this is money from the government. Two point three million in additional restrictions grant, yes, because you had spent it before, but the effort that you put into spending it quickly so that you became eligible was extraordinary, and I'd like you to know that I helped you with that as well, referring applicants who were in difficulty to the finance team who looked on them favourably. So please do not deny us that fact that we have supported this, that it is money from the government, and it was two point three million. Yes, the vouchers are valued. Some people are saying they think it should be spent differently, they don't understand that it's come from the government because your letter didn't say so. It tried, it made it very clear that it came from you, which wasn't correct, and that has been spoken about in blogs and other places. What needs to be done, though, is the point that councillor Khan made, that for some people, this is a twenty minute, a twenty pound voucher for extras, and if anyone can afford to spend it on extras, that's the point. It's for businesses. That's the whole point of the scheme, it's an additional restrictions grant for businesses. So great if you can have a pedicure, your wife can have a pedicure. I hope it will be one that's extra.
Thirty seconds left.
Yeah. So this is just to say that we, I think the amendment is a reasonable one, we are making positive changes to it to reflect what's needed in local areas. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor John Abida. I now would like to invite the councillor Kuldeep Thak for the second.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll second it and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Kuldeep Thak. Now, I would like to invite councillor Catherine Dunn, if you agree with the proposal to amend the motion.
No, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. We're now going to invite the member to debate the proposed amendment only. We are going to invite the debate on the proposed amendment only. Thank you. And I remind members that only contribute to the debate on the amendment once. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I was encouraged when councillor Abida started, sympathetic to the amendment, but what we just had was, it's like a double-edged sword. It starts off nice and then it gets really sharp and you realise how dangerous it is. Because we started off, yeah, it's okay, and then we went into, I don't know, three, four minutes to raid criticizing us again. They cannot help it. They cannot help it. And clearly, I know he's your right-hand man, councillor Abida, councillor Mesisso, if you read his blog last week, it referred to where he came from, his ancestry, his original home, he then, he then goes on, he then goes on.
Point of order, Mr Mayor.
Point of information, I think.
Point of information. What's my name's got to do with this?
So point of information, councillor Mesisso's blog was published, what, the tenth of September? So the week before last.
Yeah, so.
Excuse me, I'm going to invite councillor Giles to speak, is the councillor Mesisso and councillor Curran. As I understand, councillor Curran is correctly addressing the councillor Mesisso, so I think that is not the point of order or point of information.
I apologise, Mr Mayor. I must be rubbing up the wrong way. He's always mentioning me.
Apologies, Mr Mayor, for my interjection.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. So councillor Mesisso's blog of a couple of weeks ago, if that helps, clearly states that where he came, where he originates from, forgotten where it was now, but, sorry, Uganda, great, but what he said that in his country, they would see that as buying votes. So because we've given out this twenty pound voucher, too much for residents to stimulate growth in local business, we are now buying votes. So clearly, the message has not got through to councillor Abida. So that's why it's a double-edged sword with these guys. They're nice at the start with, but as they draw it out, the blood starts seeping out and you realise you've been cut. So that's why I cannot support this amendment. They should do the right thing and support the original motion wholeheartedly, and then we might be able to smile and say, well done.
Thank you, councillor Curran. Now, I would like to invite the councillor McGregor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The amendment is well made and councillor Curran's come back to his voucher. Of course, two point four million pounds on vouchers is equivalent to the budget underspend, and I understand that, but it was in fact financed from the central government, so I don't think we can cry too much about that. The other issue about two point four million is that compared to the total size of the economy in Hounslow, it's not even a drop in the ocean, because quite simply, it'll just help retailers to get themselves back on some sort of firm ground. But we're being ravaged by a range of issues here, including the concept that we need to carry on paying the universal credit at the higher level and the furlough issues. At some stage, these have to come to an end because the economy cannot stand the strain. The general economy cannot stand the strain. And if you look at the borrowing made by central government just in August, as declared yesterday, second highest amount of government borrowing in mid-year of all time, of all time. We are not in a position where we can do the things we like. We can't sentimentalise this. We have to do the right thing, and the right thing is to try and get the economy moving. The economy won't move with a two point four million pound voucher scheme. It sounds great. I'm not using the word, any other word for it. It sounds great, but it doesn't actually add value.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. May I now invite the councillor Theo Dennison, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For the sake of brevity, could I move under standing order thirteen point nine D that the question be now put? Otherwise, I'd be forced to come in and discuss how atrocious the government's record on borrowing is compared to our own, which they were lamenting earlier.
I second the motion, Mr Mayor.
May I ask the second, okay, we received the seconded motion. Let's, we vote for the standing order amendment. Let's we vote for the, the standing order amendment. Vote for four? So just hold on a second because the amendment motion, we are still debating and, you know, the councillor Theo Dennison has proposed the standing order. So that's why I'm asking for the vote, either in all agreed or no. Those who are favour for the vote have been put? Thank you. Any against? Now, those who are substanting? Thank you. All right, the standing order is carried. Thank you. Now we carry on, still debating the amendment motion. I would like to invite councillor Catherine Dunn. Now, where is the debate? Is that the standing order we voted?
Yeah. So now we go to the vote for the amendment motion of members. So let's vote for the amendment to the motion.
Okay, now, I think a member has put their contribution and I would like to go for the, put the vote for the amendment person, yeah? For the recommendation, for the amendment person, for the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak? I, I did say I reserve my right to speak and I was raising my hand.
Is, is all too late. Sorry, Mr. Councillor Thak. So we are now already going to the vote now for the amendments and for the recommendations? Yeah, for the amendment, yeah. Voting for the amendment? Okay. Voting for the against amendments? Okay. Any abstentions? Okay, amendment is lost. Okay, now, I would like to invite the member to debate on the original motion now. So this is a new debate. So member who have spoken before may do so again here, but no member may speak more than once. So can I invite now members to debate? No? Okay. Councillor John Thode?
Yeah, I suggest the vote be put, please.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So if, if that is the case, then shall I invite councillor Catherine Dunn for some? Thank you. If that is the case, then let's we straight to the vote now. Thank you. Now, any abstentions?
Mr. Mayor, point of information.
What is your point of interest in question, councillor Mesissou?
It's just that if you're taking the votes, can you be mindful that we have a number of councillors who have left? So who have not, who would not be here to be counted? So it's not everyone that was present at the beginning.
That's noted. Thank you. Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, point of order for me? Oh, I don't know the law. The monitoring office can tell me that.
All right. We now then kind of, may I need to take this vote already? So it's already done. I would like to declare the outcome. The motion is passed. So I would like to thank you all the member for debate. Thank you. And then I would like to, council will then move on to the next motion.
Mr. Mayor, just the point of order, can I move the suspension of?
What's a point of order?
He's the mayor, not you. Can I move that we suspend the guilty rules so that we can complete the final motion on the agenda?
Thank you. Any second here, councillor. Now let's vote for these things, voting for the far, I mean, voting for the far. Voting for exemption of standing order. Thank you. Abstention? Just one, two, yeah. Okay. Now outcome of the substanding order is carried. Thank you. Let's move down to the agenda, item number nineteen. As I can end the motion, is proposed by councillor Lillibath and seconded by councillor Guy Lambert. We now move on to the third and last motion, which can be found at agenda item nineteen. I would like to invite councillor Lillibath to propose the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been over four years when seventy two people tragically lost their lives at Grenfell Tower, one of the greatest housing injustices, injustices this country has ever seen. The government promised tougher regulation, changes to the law, more rights and accountability. I welcome the building safety bill, which is currently going through parliament. It's, it is definitely a step in the right direction and it will strengthen building safety, particularly with regards to new buildings and developments. However, the major flaws of the bill is that it doesn't really address some of the issue of historic defects in some buildings. And I refer to defects that have been present for many years. And it also doesn't address who is responsible, responsible for the costs of these repairs to make these buildings safe. As a consequence, there are now thousands of homes across the country which are considered unsafe, either, either because they have a particular kind of cladding or, or subsequent, subsequent defects have been found since Grenfell. In other words, there are potentially a number of buildings that could, are considered a risk of fire and need to have repairs done to make them safe. Some of these homes are also considered to be so unsafe that there are, there needs to be a waking watch. Currently, if you are a leaseholder in one of these buildings, you are most, in most cases liable for the cost of repairs. And these could be costs relating to historic defects or costs relating to waking watch, costs that you are likely to pay through your service charges. The government has a fund to meet these costs, which is obviously really welcome. But a couple of problems here initially is that firstly, actually fall significantly short of the money that's required to remedy the works. I was reading somewhere that there's an estimated cost of fifteen billion pounds to make good some of the works, which is far less than the fund that is available. Also, quite worryingly, it only covers certain buildings that are considered most at risk. So there are, most of the buildings wouldn't actually qualify for the money. So as you can imagine, this is a completely unacceptable situation and of course, deeply unfair on leaseholders who are having to bear the costs of all this due to systemic failures, which of course are no fault of their own. So this is why I am proposing this motion tonight, Mr. Mayor. It's not just the financial impact that this is having on, on leaseholders, but also the mental health and stress of, of not being able to sell or move and being potentially stuck in a building which is, which is unsafe. We will do as much as we can as a council to support our residents and you've seen what we've, what we've put in our, in, in our motion. And of course, we will work with other local authorities and, and local government to raise this issue. I've had a number of leaseholders who've been in touch with me about this and particularly because they've been stuck in a building which they can't sell because they, because the, their prospective buyers can't get a mortgage. And I know that we've been trying to get safety certificates for leaseholders to help them so that they can potentially possibly sell their building if possible. So I think, in short, what we are really seeing is a, a, a building safety crisis emerging across the country, which also impacts on our residents here in Hounslow. The failure to protect leaseholders will have a huge impact on councils like ours because it, it's not only the potential risk of people being homeless, because we have seen cases of people walking away because they just can't cope with the stress and they haven't got the financial means of carrying out the repairs. But it's also the potential risk of us as a council having to deal with unsafe buildings. So it is for that particular reason that I'm, I'm proposing this, this motion, sorry, not amendment. And I formally propose this motion tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bath. I've got here two seconded councillor Lambert and councillor Corin. Which one of you would like to go?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I second the, the motion and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, councillor Guy Lambert. Now we got the, we come to the proposed amendment, which member can find in the supplementary agenda. I would like to again invite councillor Gerard McGregor to introduce the amendment person. Thank you, councillor McGregor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Bath, because what you say is all true. And it's a bad representation. And I think the systemic problem, if you see the amount of mental illness that it created amongst the London Fire Brigade, you wouldn't believe the consequences. Apart from the fatalities, the emergency services were devastated by not being able to rescue people. The ambulance service was devastated by not being able to get there to help provide oxygen to those people who were suffocating. It's a complete systemic problem. Now, we broadly accept the way you've outlined your motion. It's, it's a decent motion. The issue however, is you're looking at the government to supply the response, when in fact, as we all know, it was the industry itself that failed to deliver proper standards. And we know from the tests done on the residual cladding at Grenfell, that the combination of the cladding and other cladding support created toxic situation. And one of the other problems we have is that many high rise buildings were built using industrial components. You see a lot of high rise buildings, for example, in the east end of London. And there was a tragedy many years ago, a high rise building called Ronan Point, where a small gas explosion ended up pulling down the industrial units on top of it in a complete corner of this eighteen storey high rise building. And that made people think. But what we didn't do unfortunately was to get rid of potential flues where a toxic material or a smoke barrier was not created. And it's not just the cladding, it's the design configuration as much as anything else. And what we put with our amendment is not to change your motion at all. We've added to it because we believe that the industry should look to itself. The industry created the problem, the industry should pay for it. And we can do that with a fiscally neutral programme, such as the one that rescued the Lloyd's insurance market a generation ago. And that worked because the Lloyd's insurance market had a valuable insurance regime. But the same thing is true now. If you look at the building and development, property development are going on in the United Kingdom at the moment, guess who are the most financially profitable and giving the biggest yield? It is currently a lot of property, house building and property development companies. They are capable. If we offer them a fiscally neutral opportunity to create a fund, then we don't have to bother the leaseholder and we can certainly provide tenant management organisations like the one that failed at Kensington with proper funding to ensure that they can get their act together to support council tenants. We mustn't forget the council tenants. It's not just leaseholders who have a barrier here. Council tenants are finding it equally hard to transfer out, equally hard to find new accommodation. In effect, they're marooned. Sometimes marooned on the twelfth or the twenty first or the twenty fifth floor. That's not a clever thing to have. It's not a good thing for anybody. It's socially divisive and it's bad for people's health. I go back to health again, where I started talking about mental health. We have to consider the way people react now to living in a high rise. If you're living in a high rise with a central staircase and four lifts, you start to worry. You start to worry about the consequences if another Grenfell takes place and God forbid that should happen. So I urge the councils as a whole and my colleagues in the Labour Party to consider the amendment we put in because we want to strengthen what you're doing and we want to offer solution. And your solution is to look at a funding process using a model that we know works, making it fiscally neutral so that in effect, we are not asking people to pay into it that they cannot afford. And the people who can afford it would be the building companies themselves from the industry. After all, it was their trade regulator who got involved in specifying and certifying the cladding. And that specification was then unfortunately limited. And people took advantage of that limitation to provide us with the consequences. I have to tell you, very quickly before I close, I attended a football match at Loftus Road. And it was attended by residents all over North Kensington and Hammersmith. And we had an all star team and the funds from that went into the Grenfell Fund. What was so remarkable was the crowd was predominantly women and children. They wanted to show their empathy with what had happened. And not only did they show their empathy, we raised hundreds of thousands of pounds from the television rights and all the rest of it to go into the Grenfell Fund. That's the sort of attitude we should have about this. We can do it. We're a wealthy country and we have a wealthy business building industry. They did it, they should pay.
Thank you, councillor McGregor. You finished just on time. I would like to now invite the councillor Ron Mesissou for the second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second the recommendation, the amendment, and I would like to add some comments to it, please.
Yeah, okay. Get him on.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate councillor Lillibath for all the hard work she's done on, on this issue in her portfolio as well. And she speaks a lot of truth, as councillor McGregor said, but they're very narrow truths, as in there's a wider facts that we need to address before this, this council today. One is that the national government has already taken forward the recommendations from the Grenfell Tower report fully. Grenfell Tower report, fully taken forward the recommendations. And it's our government that has now banned combustible materials on any new buildings that are being built around our constituencies right now. So yes, I agree with her in what she said about the fire safety bill, which is going through Parliament, but as well as the building safety bill as well. And there are two regulators that have been formed, a new building safety regulator, which is now in place, and a regulator for construction products, which is fully operational and was as soon as the Grenfell happened. So our government has already implemented changes for those fire safety regulations. And I note that councillor Lily Barth was part of that programme and I commend her for the work that she did with her team to make sure that places like Green Dragon Lane had the fire safety regulations checked over. But it is a result of weaknesses in previously historical testing policies for constructions. That is why we are here, that is why Grenfell happened. So these new regulations will prevent any further abuse of the testing system by builders and by developers, which were clearly not followed by developers and builders in the past. As we know, the majority of buildings with dangerous cladding have now been treated. The majority have now been treated. This was a pledge, a national pledge, for all buildings in the social sector. We called on the developers in the private sector to also step up the mark and do the right thing. And I think they are doing that. They had to address the remedial works on their own accord, but in cases where they couldn't afford or could not do or were no longer existing, the government has stepped in to support them. It means that developers are now able to meet the costs of the work, okay? And those who are unable to meet the cost can access government funding and they are doing so, meaning that no costs can be passed down to leaseholders. Mr. Mayor, it has given certainty to leaseholders in high-rise buildings, knowing that they will not have to cover any cost of cladding remedial works. So a total of five billion pounds was set aside by the government to support the removal of cladding for all leaseholders in high-rise flats. And that's flats above eighteen metres or sixteen stories. And a low interest rate loan was set up for leaseholders in social buildings below the mark of eighteen metres or six stories. It means that those unique cases where leaseholders have to pay, they should not pay more than fifty pounds a month towards the removal of any unsafe cladding. Those wanting to sell or remortgage, as councillor Lily Barth has said, will find that the government reached an agreement with the chartered surveyors to train up two thousand more specialists of surveyors to administer the EWS-1 certificate, which tells lenders if the building is safe or not. If there is a campaign that we should get behind, let us get behind a campaign to bring more EWS-1 trained surveyors to Hounslow to help us get through this. Because the bureaucracy process is now being simplified. Leaseholders in Chiswick, Hounslow and Feltham can now have peace of mind. The Ministry of Housing has stepped up to secure agreement for lenders so that homeowners and builders where cladding has been removed no longer require an EWS-1 form to sell their property. So I've said before, we're protecting our leaseholders and the government is taking swift action on this and we shouldn't be looking in hindsight, we should be looking forward. And I support the amendment.
Councillor Machisso, you've got thirty seconds.
Yes, I support the amendment that we have put. And I think this issue of cladding removal is extremely important and we owe it to the seventy-two souls that perished on the fourteenth of June, 2017. I was there the next day speaking to families. We owe it to them to open this motion up and not play party politics. I've been on a council estate for the last fifteen years, I know what it feels like to live on the eleventh floor of a cladded building. Let's open this motion up.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Machisso. Now, I would like to ask councillor Lily Barth if you are agree with the proposal amendment motion.
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't.
Thank you very much, councillor Lily Barth.
I'll explain to you while he...
Now, I would like to invite the debate on the proposed amendment only, proposed amendment only. And I remind a member that only contribute to the debate on the amendment once. Okay, so I would like to invite the member to debate on the proposed amendment only. Thank you. Councillor Guy Lambert, please.
I'm not sure of the protocol because I've reserved my right to speak on the substantive motion, but I want to make the statement on the amendment. We appear to have two different amendments there. Councillor McGregor accepts that there is a problem here. Councillor Machisso says there isn't one. I can assure councillor Machisso there is a problem. There are leaseholders in my ward who are still held up by this. They may be in buildings under eighteen metres high and in practice, they are trapped there. And getting certificates, I can't remember the name of them, will not help because they won't get the certificates. They're not safe, they're not being addressed by, as councillor McGregor points out, you know, they're not being addressed by the building industry. Now, going to the motion itself, the motion says, sorry, the amendment suggests that we put the responsibility for this on the building trade. But that's what the motion says, the motion says that in the first place. However, the building trade are not going to wake up one morning and decide to put funds to solve these problems without being forced to do that by the government. In fact, if they've got a hundred thousand pounds spare hanging around in their pockets, they're more inclined to give it to Michael Gove for whatever reasons he's going to use it for. So the amendment is completely pointless. It doesn't address, it's factually incorrect and it doesn't actually address the, it doesn't actually amend effectively what was in the substantive motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Guy Lambert. May I ask to who councillor Catherine Dunn, please?
I'm planning orders to go for the vote, please, on the amendment. Yeah.
Sure.
Your group agreed?
Yes.
Thank you. Here we go, let's go for the original substantive, sorry, the amendment version. So let's go for the straight down to the vote then. Okay, vote for the amendment version for... Thank you. Against? Any substantive, sorry, abstention? Thank you. So outcome of the result is the lost. Thank you. Now, I would like to, yeah, I have just declared the vote, it's lost amendment version. And I would like to move to the substantive item now. And I would like to invite the member to debate the motion on the substantive original version. Thank you. This is the new debate and members who have spoken before may do so again here, but no member they speak more than once. Can I ask councillor Curran, please?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with a lot of what's been said on both sides of the chamber this evening on this matter. But one that we shouldn't forget is that governments of either colour over many, many years have let residents, whether they be leaseholders or tenants, down. And the regulations around building control and around how materials are used in developments have been very lax and we would accept that. So we've moved to a problem around cladding. And if it was just cladding, that's a problem reasonably simple to resolve. But what's happened is when they've taken off the cladding, good, bad or indifferent, that it's a worse nightmare underneath. And these fire dampers are not there, firewalls are not there, the right materials have not been used if they are there. So this is a systemic problem going back years and years and years, probably just after the Second World War. So all governments have been responsible for a failure there. So I think it is important that the government puts measures in place to protect tenants and leaseholders. And they, under legislation, hold the building industry to account and makes them change, makes them do the right thing. You know, there are reputable developers and builders out there, there's no question of that, and there are others who are not. That's why it's important going forward that there's clear legislation that the industry is responsible for putting right what's gone wrong and that the industry is responsible for putting right any failures in the future, God forbid if they are. So that's why it's so important, I think, that government puts legislation in. That's the really, really important thing. If you allow the industry to manage itself or regulate itself, it won't happen. It won't happen. So I would implore that we put pressure on government where we can, all of us in this room, to make sure the industry is held to account through legislation, not just through agreements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Curran. Now, I would like to invite the councillor Gial, please.
I propose we move to the vote.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is the seconded, was the seconded? Councillor Santon Roswell is seconded? So now we move to the, straight to the vote then? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I make just a point of information? Yeah, if, thank you, this is very important to me and thank you for giving me the second. If there are any residents that councillor Lambert is aware of or any other member to do with leasehold, I've lived in a council block fifteen years, so just one second, one second, just get in touch with me.
Councillor Machisso.
Can I, can I, may I suggest, just get in touch with me and I will sort it out.
Councillor Machisso, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I would like to now move to the substantive motion to vote, okay? The substantive motion, yeah, motion for the four. Thank you. Now against? Now, any abstention? Thank you very much. Now, I would like to declare the outcome of the motion as carried, thank you. Okay, we are nearly there. Now, agenda item number twenty. Any other matters?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That mayor considers any?
Yes.
I don't think so. Any emergence?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead, councillor Machisso here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me to read a brief statement.
You can't read statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's not urgent.
It's an urgent.
I think our standing order, also the past eleven hour, eleven...
Mr. Mayor, you've asked for any urgent, I've got an urgent request.
That is mayor consider urgent.
Yes.
It's not your consider urgent.
Okay, so the Chiswick residents on Fisher's Lane is not urgent to you, Mr. Mayor? The Chiswick residents who are not able to access their healthcare, access their homes, is that not urgent to you, Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Machisso, you didn't have the courtesy before I started this agenda, so I'm afraid I'm not accepting your emergency because this is the mere urgency matter. Thank you.
Okay, the record speaks for itself. Yeah, thank you.
May I ask a point of information, please?
Yeah, okay, go ahead, councillor Biddo.
I thought we had a rule before the pandemic that we couldn't take photographs in the council, is that correct? Does that still apply? Oh, is it? I remember the tweeting. I don't particularly want to say, but I just wanted to clarify whether we are allowed to or not. I know we can't tweet, that point has been made, but I wondered if we were allowed to take photos. I haven't taken any, I wouldn't want to say who has. That was my understanding, thank you for clarifying. So we are not allowed to take photos, thank you.
Thank you. So it's clear that, you know, a member cannot do it, only the public can. And the photo also, you cannot just declare by the, our rituals are saying that we are not allowed to take the photo during the meeting. Thank you.
I don't want to name and shame, that's the point.
Now, let's move down to the item number sixteen now. Yeah, we are nearly there. Date of next meeting, date of next meeting. I explained that the next meeting of the council is scheduled for Tuesday, the thirtieth of November, twenty twenty-one, Tuesday, thirtieth of November, twenty twenty-one. And then I also remind the member to sign the attendance books. I myself, I haven't done it, I think GBD Mayor also hasn't done that, so we're going to sign the book later on, so remember. We are now at the end of the meeting. To ensure that the one-metre social distancing rule is maintained and to keep us all safe, may I ask a member of the public to leave first using the two public lifts? Please remember the limit of two people per lift. Then, once there is a sufficient space, may I ask a member peel off, enrose and use all six lifts? You may find it helpful to enter the lift lobby area by taking the corridor round both sides and entering it by the back doors. So I would like to say thank you, everyone, for this involvement and I declare the meeting is now closed. Thank you. Okay.
Please stop standing.
Thank you.
Councillor Lambeth, please.
I'm not sure of the protocol because I've reserved my right to speak on the substantive motion, but I want to make a statement on the amendment. We appear to have two different amendments there. Councillor McGregor accepts that there is a problem here. Councillor Mesisha says there isn't one. I can assure councillor Mesisha there is a problem, there are leaseholders in my ward who are still held up by this, they may be in buildings under 18 metres high and in practice, they are trapped there. And getting certificates, I can't remember the name of them, will not help because they won't get the certificates. They're not safe, they're not being addressed by, as councillor McGregor points out, you know, they're not being addressed by the building industry. Now, going to the motion itself, the motion says, sorry, the amendment suggests that we put the responsibility for this on the building trade. But that's what the motion says, the motion says that in the first place. However, the building trade are not going to wake up one morning and decide to put funds to solve these problems without being forced to do that by the government. In fact, if they've got £100,000 spare hanging around in their pockets, they're more inclined to give it to Michael Gove for whatever reasons he's going to use it for. So the amendment is completely pointless, it doesn't address, it's factually incorrect and it doesn't actually address the, it doesn't actually amend effectively what was in the substantive motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lambeth. May I ask to who councillor Catherine Dunn, please?
Agree?
Sure.
Your group agreed?
Yes.
Thank you. Here we go, let's go for the original substantive, sorry, abstention. Okay, vote for the amended amendment version for... Thank you. Against? Thank you. Any substantive? Substantive? Thank you. So outcome of the result is the lost. Thank you. Now, I would like to, yeah, I have just declared the vote is lost amendment version. And I would like to move to the substantive item now. And I would like to invite the member to debate the motion on the substantive original version. Thank you. This is the new debate and members who have spoken before may do so again here, but no member they speak more than once. Can I ask councillor Curran, please?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with a lot of what's been said on both sides of the chamber this evening on this matter. But one that we shouldn't forget is that governments of either colour over many, many years have let residents, whether they be leaseholders or tenants, down. And the regulations around building control and around how materials are used in developments have been very lax and we would accept that. So we've moved to a problem around cladding. And if it was just cladding, that's a problem reasonably simple to resolve. But what's happened is when they've taken off the cladding, good, bad or indifferent, that it's a worse nightmare underneath. And these fire dampers are not there, firewalls are not there, the right materials have not been used if they are there. So this is a systemic problem going back years and years and years, probably just after the Second World War. So all governments have been responsible for a failure there. So I think it is important that the government puts measures in place to protect tenants and leaseholders. And they, under legislation, hold the building industry to account and makes them change, makes them do the right thing. You know, there are reputable developers and builders out there, there's no question of that, and there are others who are not. That's why it's important going forward that there's clear legislation that the industry is responsible for putting right what's gone wrong and that the industry is responsible for putting right any failures in the future, God forbid if they are.